Good morning, it's nine o'clock. We will start the April 24th meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. For the record, there's a copy of the MOP meetings act located on the north wall of the chambers. Also, in the rear of the facility, there's an automatic defibrillator, in case that is needed. And also note, if you have any cell phones, will you silence them or please turn them off? With that, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
We will now call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yep.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, April 17, 2018. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, May 1, 2018, as a date for certified hearing on certified assessment corrections. It's the will of the Board. Moved by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Craft. Please vote.
Motion passes, all voting yes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to make comment on a Board of Equalization related item that is not officially listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. We have one item. Item D is a resolution to approve the application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Do you approve the approval of Resolution D and adjournment?
There's a motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by Commissioner Boyle.
Motion passes, all voting yes.
We'll now call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Clear.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here.
All present.
Item one, minutes and claims. Letter A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, April 17, 2018. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, April 24, 2018. It's the will of the Board.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Craft, seconded by Commissioner Morgan.
Motion passes, all voting yes.
Item two is the consent agenda. There are 11 items on the consent agenda. What's the will? Well, I lead to ask if we can approve, uh, E, number two. There's an amendment that needs to be made to that. Um, with that, the will of the Board?
I'd like to pull G separately.
Okay, G will be pulled. Mark.
Claire, do you need to?
Yes. Thank you. I would be interested in providing.
Okay. With that.
Yes.
Um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of E2? Letter G and letter K. There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
I vote yes. Motion passes, all voting yes. And, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm just, for E2, I'm handing out some copies of the.
Please do. Consent agenda, item E2 is the resolution to approve an affiliation agreement between Douglas County Health Center and Creighton University for Dental Services. The clerk is handing out, uh, the new contract. This was talked about at the Board of, uh, Health Meeting, the Health Center Meeting, Board of Trustees Meeting, and there has been a tweak added. Gene, if you want to come up and explain this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jean Hartnett, Administrator with the Douglas County Health Center. Um, as Commissioner Rogers mentioned, there has been a slight modification to the affiliation agreement with Creighton Dental. Uh, the modification relates to, on your second page, item 10A, related to professional liability insurance. Our initial contract, um, had boilerplate language related to liability insurance that required Creighton to qualify under the Nebraska Liability Fund. We've since learned that dentists do not, um, fall under the Nebraska Liability Fund. So Creighton Dental has offered alternative language, which you will note in item 10A. What this does is it still allows us to have liability coverage for students when they are practicing, um, in their clinical experience on our campus. So that, it's just a slight modification, but still offering coverage.
We don't have a Board, so you all are going to have to question the Board.
Yes, I have a, uh, a question about, um, really about procedure. I'm curious, contracts like this, where do they end up? Where are they filed? If you want to look at them again, do they go to the county attorney, or do they go to you, or who?
Typically, I send it to the, the county clerk's office.
County clerk. So the county clerk, you keep all the contracts?
Correct.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Prior to that, it may be, pardon me for interrupting, the county attorney's office has vetted this, but prior to it coming to Board of Trustees and Board of Commissioners, so that loop has also been covered.
Something like approved form, which, anyway, I always have a problem with. That's okay.
Commissioner Borgeson. We have one question.
And did, did I understand you that the professional liability would be provided by Creighton, not by us?
It is my understanding that it would be offered by Creighton, yes.
Okay, 'cause that, it doesn't, oh, providing services, well, it doesn't really say that. Um, the rest of them say like, universities shall maintain, universities shall be responsible. It might be worth adding that, I don't know. I'll let the legal beagles figure that out, but I just wanted to make sure that it was them that was providing.
Yes, and it, in the email that I received from their risk manager, it is indicated that Creighton would provide that, but you're, you're correct, Commissioner Borgeson is not reflected in the contract as such.
Tricia here at County Attorney's Office. If I may direct the Board's attention to the beginning of paragraph 10, it says during the term of this agreement, "University shall maintain at its own expense the following professional liability insurance," and then goes into 10A, and 10A provides for the 1 million per occurrence and 3 million in the annual aggregate. So I think that the language that you're looking for is there, but it is, is actually comprised in two different paragraphs.
Perfect, thank you.
Here are questions. There are motions to approve. Motion by Commissioner Craft, seconded by Commissioner Duda.
Motion passes, all voting yes.
Going to go to item K, approval of the special designation liquor license for Ponca Hills Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Uh, one, one moment, please. Okay. Good to go.
Put a personal, personal.
Yes.
I believe I am supposed to say why I'm abstaining as a member of the Ponca Hills Volunteer Fire Department.
Please.
I'll probably be having a beer, but I'll not be voting on them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion passes. Uh, as Commissioner Duda stated, he's abstaining. Everyone else voting yes.
And you're supposed to use this as a method of promoting the event.
Okay, good idea. Item G, resolution approving best and final offer to the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Eight in pursuit of a one-year collective bargaining agreement for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. What's the will of the Board? It's a motion by Commissioner Duda, second.
No.
No, he can, he can go in discussion. Second by Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I'm going to be brief on this. I sent you, uh, an email describing what, uh, what I intended to do this morning, and what I'm asking about, asking us to, to do is to amend the contract, as it is the labor contract before us, to, uh, include alternative resolution, uh, rather than sending everybody to court. We don't know, uh, yet what the cost is of, of having all of these, I think there's six pending right now, uh, in the court system, uh, with, uh, judges deciding whether or not a promotion should be made, uh, on a, on a, an employee. It is, in my opinion, it's something we really need to get the facts on, and, uh, but I think, I, I feel comfortable enough, I've worked, worked with the state troopers and did arbitration, and, um, I'm comfortable with it. I know how it works, and, um, it's a good system. The other thing I have experienced with unions stepping up and policing their own employees. The City of Omaha, uh, we talked to the civilian union there, Ed Cox, rest his soul. Uh, we talked about the violations of sick leave. There was a lot of sick leave going on. And so, Mr. Cox agreed that the union would step in and, uh, make sure that employees were really using that benefit appropriately, uh, and it worked very well. It brought a, a really good resolution. That's what this union would do as well. An employee who feels aggrieved cannot just file a grievance with civil service. It would go through the union, and the union would either approve it or decline it. And that is, they're the gatekeeper, which is really an important point to bring this out. I think it's really a, a good thing to do, and it, it really enhances the attractiveness. Uh, in 2002, the county approved, uh, this sort of procedure for the Sheriff's Merit Commission, so we have, uh, in an operation already for one of the other fraternal order of police unions. It is not a, um, a waste of money, it is actually, I think, going to save money. I think it will add to morale, uh, when employees have a disagreement over something that, uh, is about where they park their car, uh, where they, uh, where, if they're not promoted. Uh, this should not be clogging up the court system, tying up county attorneys. We shouldn't be doing that. So, what I'd like to do is offer, uh, an amendment to the, uh, labor contract, uh, and I'll pass this out, but not, not now, but I, I will get it all to you, it's very clear. Um, I'd like to see Douglas County and FOP Lodge Eight enter into a separate memorandum of agreement, wherein each agrees that they will endeavor to propose and advance a legislative bill in the Nebraska Legislative Session to begin in January of 2019, with the intent to amend Nebraska law statute 23-2510 to allow a certified or recognized bargaining agent of employees in the Douglas County Department of Corrections to bring non-disciplinary appeals to the Douglas County Civil Service Commission. And we used to do this, so that's what I'm proposing, and I make that motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes, um, I, I generally agree with Commissioner Boyle. I just have a, a couple of questions. The amendment, um, that, uh, you've shared with me, uh, reads that, uh, we will, uh, work with FOP Eight, uh, with the Nebraska Legislature in January 2019, the next time they meet.
Right.
Uh, to get a change in statutes to allow a certified or recognized bargaining agent of employees in the Douglas County Department of Corrections to bring non-disciplinary appeals to the Douglas County Civil Service Commission. Is that arbitration? Is that what we're talking about here?
Uh, I, I believe it is. It is to me, it's a, an arbitration provision, uh, dealing with non-disciplinary grievances.
Okay. And I notice that we have, uh, representatives of the brave men and women from the Douglas County Corrections Officers, uh, FOP Eight with us today, and their representative, Mr. Corrigan, could you, uh, come up for a second?
John Corrigan, 1411 Harney Street, Omaha, Nebraska, on behalf of Fraternal Order, Police Lodge Eight.
Thanks for being here. This amendment, I presume you've, you've gone over this amendment as well?
The, uh, we have.
And, um, is this, the, you know, as far as a move towards arbitration in these matters, acceptable to, uh, bargaining unit FOP Eight?
Well, the, uh, I guess from my perspective, the, we have in the contract with the county and have had since at least 1979, a provision that says that grievances go to the Civil Service Commission, and it doesn't distinguish between whether that's a disciplinary grievance or not a disciplinary grievance. It's always been, at least since I've been around, in this contract. In 2007, the commission of, the Civil Service Commission, uh, had, I think, 48 cases backed up, because there was no provision that prevented anybody from filing an individual grievance. Um, and the, they eventually went to court, and the district court decided that the statute 25, I'm sorry, 232510 did not allow the commission to exercise jurisdiction over anything other than disciplinary grievances. And that's been the case, really, since 2007. Um, what, what we're talking about doing is going, you know, this isn't going to happen overnight, obviously, the, there, if it's going to happen, it's going to take a cooperative effort with the legislature. Obviously, a, a governor has to sign that, or, uh, you all are very experienced in the difficulties in, uh, passing legislation, but there is no cost to the state for this. We think that will certainly help. It's not traditionally arbitration, in the sense that, uh, the, the Civil Service Commission, what, what this amendment is suggesting is, if the director decides after the grievance procedure, which is the, the director is kind of the third step, if the director makes a decision and the employee isn't happy about that, the union itself can take that grievance to the Civil Service Commission, um, and the Civil Service Commission then would decide, based on a vote of the majority, whether the contract had been violated by the alleged conduct of the, uh, of the employer. Or the employee, for that matter, I mean, it's, it goes both ways. But the, um, the, the factor of the union having to, uh, be in charge of that, so let's say that the individual employee wants to take a grievance because they felt that they should have been awarded the parking spot that they didn't get, and the union said, "No, you're wrong, you, you didn't get that, and you should not have gotten that." That employee can't do anything about that. Once the, I mean, they, they may try to do something internally or externally with the union, but it doesn't involve the county. Uh, and the reason this is important is, uh, the, the current process is time-consuming, it, there is no end date necessarily on when a claim, uh, has to be denied by the Board, and then we're, we're into the court system. And, uh, we have this in the contract today, we've had it for a long time. The union, we've, we have been working at this for many, many years, and my own estimate is that, had this provision been in place for the last three years, the Civil Service Commission may have seen about 2.3 grievances more a year than they did under the current status. I know my work with the FOP Lodge Two, we might have one or two grievances a year, i-if that, in front of the Merit Commission. So it's not a workload, uh, process, uh, but it is a, a, a simple alternative dispute resolution mechanism, and what we're asking you to do is, is, uh, assist us in the legislature to make this change, because it is a streamlining of, uh, dispute resolution that really helps both sides. With that, I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'd, I'd really, you know, we're not too far apart on this contract, and we understand the concept of last best and final offer, and we'll have to take that to a, a, a vote, and all we're asking is you to go down Lincoln with us, hand in hand next year, and see that this change, uh, takes place, so that we have a place to land that doesn't involve a direct shot to the district court. So thank you.
I appreciate that. And, and Commissioner Boyle, thanks for bringing this. I think this is a real step in the right direction, and I think it could save us some money, too, if, if we go that route, rather than litigating things. So, thanks for bringing it.
Not in my personal interest, I'd just like to say.
I understand that. But, uh, I commend you for bringing this, and I'm, I'm enthusiastic in my support of your, your motion.
Commissioner Moore.
Well, the only thing I'd add is that, uh, and thank you for your presentation, it was right on point. Um, you know, I, I think, uh, if we would add this, you know, this is so similar to what we do with the Sheriff's Merit Commission. Uh, it is similar to the City of Omaha Personnel Department, or the Personnel Board. All these things are, all those boards and commissions and the Merit Commission, all the rest, are geared to, um, end disagreements that occur between employees and the employer, and it is, uh, a, you know, it is governed by, uh, the unions, they control what comes and goes. It's a rare, it's a good opportunity to really streamline things, get this out of the court system. Judges should not be asked to decide who gets to park in a parking place. It's a waste of resources. I think it's a good thing. So, uh, I hope that you'll, uh, consider doing this. I think it's a good thing, and, uh, with that, I'll, uh, you know, close out. I, I think, if we do vote for this, one of the first things we should do is ask Mike Dornicki, our auditor, to look up what the cost is and bring back a, a real explanation of what we're paying now and what we might pay under this system. So thank you very much for considering this, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kavanaugh and Commissioner Duda.
I just wanted to say, uh, thanks to the, uh, members of FOP, the, uh, aid who've taken time out of their own day to come down here today and participate in this discussion. Thank you.
Commissioner Duda.
Well, this thing makes me very uncomfortable, since public negotiating is illegal, um, and it sure seems like we're getting every opportunity we can to try to do that. A question on this amendment, which, by the way, I haven't seen yet. Before we vote on it, I hope I get to see it. We are now committing a future board, next year's board, to say you will lobby for this issue. Is that part of the amendment that I haven't seen yet?
Yes.
Okay. How can we commit a future board? We don't even know if the seven of us are still going to be here next year. Some of us are up for reelection. What if it's a different board, and they say, "We don't support this legislation," and we say, "Too bad, it's in the union contract that we have to support this legislation." What if the commissioner disagrees and goes down to Lincoln and lobbies against it? Not that any of us would ever lobby against the will of the Board. Is that illegal? How can we take a stand? The public negotiating is a bad idea. I don't like this whole conversation. I don't like committing a future board. I think all of these things are illegal and inappropriate. We put our final and best offer on the table, but I knew that we would have a chance to really show the unions how strong some of us are for them, and never, never pass up an opportunity. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore.
Well, I, just to briefly comment, um, I understand your concern, and I, it doesn't surprise me we've had these conversations privately, and I understand it, and I respect your position. Um, I apologize for not passing out this amendment in advance. I, I was at an eight o'clock meeting, which, uh, didn't materialize right away, but anyway. Um, the, uh, you know, we commit, we commit future boards to things all the time. We're about ready to do that on a, a project coming up. And, um, but, uh, this is nothing bizarre. If this is what we're at, what this asks for is the standard we have with other departments, and even other unions. Well, the Sheriff's Merit Commission, we have a, you know, the grievances are handled there, and, uh, it is one that avoids all possible filing suits. So I think it's, has a lot of merit, and I just, I think we ought to consider it and let the unions be the gatekeeper, so.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes. Um, this has been brought up in the lengthy discussions we've had regarding the negotiations, and while I'm in favor of it, and in favor of arbitration, we've been negotiating this for over 10 months, I believe. When does a contract come due? Again, when does this expire?
Commissioner Martin, this contract expired on June 30th of 2017.
June 30th.
We've been negotiating since, uh, we, we exchanged in May, uh, proposals in 2017, and we've been negotiating thus far.
So, yeah, it was part of the negotiation package. There's only two more months before we start negotiating again. I'm in favor of this, but I'm going to suggest we just delay this until the new negotiations I'm in favor of arbitration, too, so.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Boyle.
I'd like to call the question, if no one else is up to speak.
There is no other questions, there's a motion on the floor. Clerk has the motion. Clear?
Well.
Repeat what you have, please.
We have, uh, well, I would request that we can get the exact wording of what Commissioner Boyle, uh, but we have.
Fast action.
What we have is, uh, consent agenda, item G, amend, amend to enter in a separate MOU, and obviously, there, he had much more than that, but I thought that was the, uh, the gist of what, uh, he's offering. And I have a motion by Commissioner Boyle, and a second by Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Can, we got another question, Commissioner Borgeson?
Not so much a question, but since the union, uh, folks are here today, I wanted to explain my vote, um, which I've already, um, stated prior to this public, but, uh, setting, but, um, a few weeks ago, month ago, I, I don't even know how long ago now, this chamber was filled with representatives from the correction facility, um, with very, um, heartbreaking conversations of, in, in hopes that we would address the overtime issue at the correction facility, which hit each and every one of us, um, right in the heart, and we got busy, um, and started to come up with what we could do to figure that, uh, problem out. And part of this contract, um, answers, uh, those issues, uh, while we're still working on some of the HR processes. So, um, I agree with arbitration as well, but this is not the proper forum nor procedure for us to bring this in to the contract at this point. If the overtime issue, and again, as far as I know, the overtime issue is still a problem, um, I see some heads nodding yes, then I would think that we need to, uh, hurry up and approve this contract that allows us to offer an increase in pay to draw on individuals coming to work for, uh, the county and the correction facility, and then move after that into negotiating the next contract, as we all know is going to happen within, um, very short, short time period.
Commissioner Duda.
Can I see a copy of the amendment that we're about to vote on?
It's on the way.
It's on the way? Will we get it before we vote on it?
Yes.
Oh.
Four minutes.
Well, okay.
Before we talk about something else, I don't care. Sorry.
That'll get kind of complicated. Um.
Whatever you like to do. I apologize.
It's not really an option, because the motion's on the floor and it's live. So, seeing no further questions, there is a motion, uh, to, and I'm going to sum this up roughly, a motion to include, uh, an agreement to, uh, advocate for legislation for arbitration to the state legislature into the current contract. That's fair?
I think so, and I, in all candor, uh, I didn't think it was necessary to distribute the, uh, language, because I think I know why everybody's going to vote.
With that, we, Commissioner Morgan.
I too am supportive of at least looking at the arbitration issue, but at the same time, I didn't feel this is the appropriate place to be discussing that, and I think what Commissioner Craft said and Borgeson about, we're going to be negotiating the next six weeks, two months, and listening to Marcos and Diane Carlson, we need to do it in that right fashion. So, that's my position, and I do want to be, uh, supportive of what's going on, uh, in the future and discussing it fully. Okay.
Again, there's a motion to amend, uh, to add, um, language. We nod on that motion. Please vote.
Commissioners Boyle and Kavanaugh voting yes. All their commissioners voting no.
Item G, resolution is, we have a motion, a second. Please vote.
Uh, give us one moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh abstains. All their commissioners voting yes.
Well, you know, I think that, uh, we should have adopted the Commissioner Boyle's amendment. Uh, I think that, you know, the, the point of these negotiations is to reach agreement, and, um, we've heard that this would help us reach agreement, and now we've taken a step to not reach agreement. This is a non-economic demand, and I think that we should have probably included it. I understand, and I share, Commissioner Duda's, um, concern about seeing stuff at the last minute. Um, I think that we should have more robust and public discussion of important county business. And so, you know, for those reasons, although much of the contract, I think, is warranted and probably good, I, I don't know why we stumble over non-economic demands that, as Commissioner Boyle points out, is probably going to save us money, probably going to be good for the taxpayers of Douglas County. And so, thank you, Commissioner Boyle, and, and for that. And so, thank you, Commissioner Boyle, and in spite for that, I guess I would have voted for it.
There's other requests to speak, but since the motion's been voted on, I'm going to move. With that, is there any citizen, we go to item number four, are there any citizens' comments at this time? This is an opportunity to comment on an item that is not officially listed on the board's agenda.
My name's John Corrigan, 1411 Harley Street. Just to comment, we just saw five members of this board say they're in favor of arbitration, and we know we're going to go back to negotiations for a contract year. That is, that is to say, we will go back to negotiations if the membership of Lodge Eight adopts or ratifies the offer that has been made. But if there's five people on this board, to your point, Mr. Duda, us discussing this contract in this open meeting, I was told I would have that opportunity to do that, so that's why I'm here, and it's not illegal. It is not illegal for us to have these conversations. One. And two, the board, just about your concern about members of the board binding future boards, most of the time, these are multi-year contracts. That happens all the time as to the statement of what's going to be, wages in terms of conditions of employment, or agreements with the union, or with Hawkins Construction, or whoever that is. The county obligates itself for years into the future on a regular basis, so this isn't anything different. But now that we have the statements from five of the board members that they're in favor of some alternative dispute resolution, I look forward to keeping our offers in that regard that have been on the table for ten years will continue to be discussed, and I thank you for your time.
Any other citizen comment? Seeing none. We're going, okay, citizen comment?
My name is Juliette Summers, 216 South 86th Street, 68114. I'm actually here to testify in support of a budget request. I'm not certain if this is the correct time for me to speak.
I'll give you time in the budget discussions coming up.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it.
Right. And I'm assuming I know, so you'll get your opportunity on that. For the sake of time, we're going to move the budget discussion up and the finance committee up. Commissioner Craft.
We have the gentleman with the presentation.
Elected officials here. We need to get out of here.
Yeah, I'm going to try to. So, we're going to move it up to try to get the electors back to working court. Item A, finance, item one is the budget report, assuming it is as read. We'll go to items two and three together. Don and Tom asked you all to present, one present, then the other present, because my assumption is there'll be some questions that may come jointly. So, with that, we'll go into the budget presentation for the public defender. Tom Riley.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Tom Riley, Douglas County Public Defender, HO5 Civic Center. My budget request exceeds the suggested number by the county commissioners or by the county administration, and I can pretty much make it pretty simple as to why. I included in some handouts this morning the caseload numbers. And if you look from 2014 to 2017, you'll see an increase in felonies by 1,000, an increase in...
Tom, let me ask you just a question. I'm assuming are you referring to the information you provided for the budget to the board?
Did we give these to everybody?
What's the budget information committee in the middle?
It's right after the budget figure.
Sure. I'll show you what I'm talking about.
Well, we need copies. You need some time? I think so. I'm okay. I've got mine on my laptop, which you all should be using. He's got his on his laptop, too. Get with the computerization, will you? We have one, PJ and on down the line. Thanks, Tom.
Yep. You guys have mine, so I'm going to do it by memory.
Screen, too, maybe.
We tried earlier, and it looked pretty... I'm technologically challenged, so.
I get it. Very good.
All right. The, you know, obviously, the misdemeanor and felony caseload has exploded. And as you can see, in 2014 and 2015, the increases were minimal. Then in 2016, there was a big spike, and I was hoping that it was just an odd year. So, I didn't come asking for additional help. But as you can see, and we go calendar year, not fiscal year, so this is January to December 31st. As you can see, the, in the two primary categories of concern are felony and misdemeanors, and they've gone way up. Juvenile delinquency cases have gone up a couple of hundred, and the others have remained static or decreased a bit. Those are the, you know, those are not numbers that are, have a big impact on us. The corrections department, with whom I have a great relationship, thanks to Dr. Foxwell, sends me a jail census every day. And I pulled one from Sunday, and it shows that of the inmate population of about, I think, I want to say 1,300, 965 are pre-trail detainees. Only 144 people are doing county jail time out of the 1,300, 1,200 people that are in, being held in jail. Obviously, there's a couple of, there's 100 or so for the U.S. Marshal, a couple for ICE, and a spattering of other detainees. But the big number is there are 965 people sitting there waiting to get to court. And we have currently 52 lawyers, and I can tell you that the main reason that the budget request that I'm making exceeds what you recommended is because I'm asking for two more lawyers. And that runs out to about 120, a little, little less than that. And I really need them. We can't absorb 800 additional felonies and, you know, close to 2,000 additional misdemeanors over a two-year period with the status quo. I just can't do it. I have never, ever, in my career, asked a judge to stop appointing us because we have too many cases. They do it all over the country. Every time I go to a webinar or whatever, you know, they always say, "Best practices. You have to have a cap on your caseload." I just don't want to do that because I don't want to have the cost of court-appointed counsel when you have a public defender's office. And if they're appointing people outside of our office, there's an additional cost to that. But I can't, I don't see any resolution to this. I can tell you that the numbers this year are fairly close to what last year's. I don't see another huge increase, but it looks like it's about the same as last year's numbers when you average them out. As a result, I, I need the help. I need two more lawyers. I can tell you that, obviously, representing the clients and the numbers that we have, a lot of our lawyers, their psyche kind of ebbs and flows from feeling okay to feeling overwhelmed, feeling pressured, feeling depressed. And typically, the way I handle that is I would bring someone in that I noticed was having struggles, and I'd bring them in and say, "Okay, what do we need to do? Can we lighten your load? Are we, are you having a problem?" And historically, we've been able to handle it that way. I can say, over the last eight months, I have never seen the, almost the entire staff feeling overwhelmed. I watched, Commissioner Borges had made a reference to the day that the corrections officers were here, and I was, I happened to be watching that. And I, maybe that opened my eyes a little bit to what I was seeing right around me, myself, with people, you know, I'm a workaholic, so I come in all the time, Saturdays and Sundays. And I can tell you, over the last six months, I ain't alone. And we don't get OT. I always tell the lawyers in our office, "This job takes as long as it takes." If that means you have to come in on Saturday and Sunday, that means if you have to stay late, that's what you have to do." And they do it. They do it. But I think I'm at the point where I have to ask you to give us some help in the form of two additional lawyers. I'm not even sure that that will suffice, but that's where I want to start. Like I said, absorbing this amount of cases is, is just overwhelming. And keep in mind, keep in mind, we also do our own appeals, too. You know, the Attorney General handles the appeals for prosecutions. We do our own appeals as well. So, we get the case from stem to stern. And brief writing is a very time-consuming and difficult process. And I always tell my lawyers, "Well, then, don't lose, and you won't have to appeal." But I don't have control over that. Having written an awful lot of briefs myself lately, I guess I have nowhere to talk when it comes to that, losing, I guess. The other thing that is a kind of a problem, that I've got some increases on the non-salary area. By the way, I asked for a 3% increase to go into effect in January. So, the numbers that I submitted is a 3% raise that would go into effect in January, so it's a six-month number. I'm asking to be allowed to hire the two new lawyers in July, beginning of this fiscal year, in July. And I was going to say, the other, the other driver of increased cost is trying a case now, and trying a case 25 years ago, and I'm sure Don can answer it the same way, is apples and oranges. The technology that's involved now, I don't have a case where I just read police reports. The witnesses are all interviewed on disc, and you could read a police report of a five-hour interview in half an hour. But if you're watching the interview, and you better be damn well be watching the interview in its entirety, we're talking three, four, or five hours. Prosecutors have to do it. We have to do it. So, there's a lot of time consumption in there. The other thing is, now they have technology that can place cell phones at certain areas, and there's experts that have to come in and testify about this. There have been huge, dramatic changes in how they're analyzing DNA now, which is of very recent origin, that requires both the state and us to hire consultants, experts. Sometimes they have to come in and testify. Sometime I use them as a consultant to say, "Okay, how do I cross-examine this, this expert that they're going to be using?" There, you know, the technology is overwhelming. And when you get phone records, and oh, God, Facebook, and all of those kind of things, you have to sit there and look through them. And the phone records, you can imagine, most of our clients are, you know, in felonies are probably between the ages of 16 and 25. And if any of you know anyone that's in those age groups, they are addicted to those phones, and they're on them constantly. Well, they can track them now, whether you're in, using it or not. If your phone's on and you're getting, you know, notices, and they call it data, ESPN sends you something, you think, "No big deal." Well, it's on your phone, and they can put you where, within a very close range now. And, you know, whether that science is as accurate as they claim, we have to, we have to challenge that. And I said, on the DNA, we've been using, or the state typically has been using the med center for DNA analysis. And in a recent case I had, they hired a guy that had more degrees than a thermometer to, who had created his own method of analyzing DNA, which is very complex, and it takes out the human factor, and it basically, the computer program that says, they could analyze DNA and how important it was to the state's case. When the human analysis was done, the result was that my client was a 1 in 3,000 comparison. And when they did it with this other computer program, it was like 1 in a bazillion. So, those kind of things are very, very powerful tools. As you can imagine, scientific evidence has a great impact on juries, and it's necessary for us to, to raise whatever issues that are possible. I, you know, the number, that's our professional fees. It was 125, a mask of 135. That includes psychiatrists and any, I'm sure Don can tell you, Dr. Foxwell probably tells you on a regular basis, that a very high percentage of people in the jail have mental health issues. And when we, when we are faced with that, we have to have the client evaluated to determine whether they're competent proceed to trial, whether they fit the insanity defense. And sometimes you just need to do it for purposes of sentencing, to show that this person may not be as culpable because of mental, mental health issues. So, there's, and all those things are very, very expensive. So, that's pretty much where, where I'm at and where, why I'm asking for the money over, I'm sorry, money over what is recommended. I do it reluctantly, but, but I feel like my back's against the wall on this stuff, and I don't, I just don't want to be in a position where I'm going up to a judge and saying, "Hey, Judge, you have to start appointing private lawyers because we can't handle the numbers anymore." If you give me two more lawyers, I think we can make it through the year, and we'll have to reassess it again at the end of the next year. That's, that's where I'm at.
Your question is from Commissioner Craft, Borges, and Boyle.
And the cost, if we have to go to the judge and ask him, or tell him, "You do not have enough attorneys." The county still pays for it, correct?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, or, I will do anything not to do that. I mean, if you don't give me the lawyers, I'll just do my best, probably, unless I see people starting to wobble on the interstate bridge.
And it is less expensive for us to use our own attorneys?
Well, I think in the long haul, it is. Yeah, I do. Obviously, that, we have a pretty good relationship, not pretty good, we have a very good relationship with the county attorney's office. We get discovery. We, we can work things out. You know, private lawyers who maybe have 10 cases a year with prosecutors, going to take longer for them to get up to speed, do research, stuff that we have done 25, 30 times, and we have in our motion bank and in our brief bank, we can get that stuff done quicker. And I'm not slamming any private attorneys, don't get me wrong. There, there are a bunch of really good private lawyers that do criminal, criminal work here. I'm just saying, as a matter of fiscal responsibility, the public defender's offices across the country are, are the wiser decision as far as fiscal concerns go.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borges?
Thank you, Tom. A couple of questions. So, the 52 public defenders you have right now, you would add two to that.
Yes.
But you also have other staff that make, that makes up to the 120, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't 120 attorneys that I was missing.
No, no. That includes for the support staff, which I'm not asking for an increase necessarily in that at this point.
Okay. Okay. And then what is, I know you've given this to us before, but the client attorney ratio right now, it was pretty high last year, if I remember when we looked at it. We talk about that a lot, but I don't remember the numbers.
Well, it's basically, it, you know, the, what we do is, we have supervisory staff who dole out the cases every day. And we have target numbers. And we have a group of lawyers that do more misdemeanors than felonies.
Okay.
So we'll have a group of maybe 10 or 12 that get 50 misdemeanors a month. I mean, the, the caseload that they carry is probably 200 at a time, on average, as far as the ones that do a lot of misdemeanors. The ones that do a lot of felony, they do misdemeanors as well. I'm not going, I don't want to be in a position where if a guy gets charged with a felony and then he's out on bond and he gets charged with petty larceny or shoplifting or something, I don't want two lawyers. I want one lawyer handling it. I, I don't like the idea of our clients not knowing who the heck their lawyer is. You know, you show up day one and Lawyer X is there and, you know, the next hearing, there's someone else. That, that doesn't apply. So the, the, the numbers vary based on the responsibility that the lawyer has. I have, the, the lawyers that do the homicide cases, you know, they're not going to be doing as many misdemeanors. We call, we call them overflow. So when, when the numbers hit, we have a group that gets 50 misdemeanors a month, a group that gets 40 misdemeanors a month, a group that gets 35. Then we have the overflow, which is the more experienced folks that we're hoping, we don't have to have, do misdemeanors, but sometimes we just have to because they, they can't handle everything. And that's what, where the problem is, is that, you know, they're having to be in lots of different courtrooms on the same day and it gets frenetic. That's probably the best answer I could give you as to the loads.
So the, and you can break out, like, how many of these are, or of those, when I'm reading your chart, the 1,300 are the juvenile cases? Or are there juvenile cases mixed in all of these numbers?
No. The juvenile, you see where it says J. Delink status?
Uh huh.
That's delinquency cases, the way we define them. And that includes, if you, if a kid gets charged with what would be a crime if it was an adult. Say a kid does a auto theft and he's 14 or 15, they'll file it in juvenile court. That's a delinquency case. And statuses, truancies, and things along those lines. Then next to that is what you call parent cases. And other, we call those three As and they're neglect dependency cases. And it's where an individual is in danger of losing their parental rights. So we represent the parent. And the reason we are doing that is because many, many times, the parent is also charged with some kind of an assault or sexual assault on the kid, which generated the filing on the, to take away parental rights. So we're representing them both in juvenile court and in the parent case, we call it. And we also represent them on the felony charge, but it's usually a felony charge in, in adult court.
But you're representing the parent in that case?
That's right.
Right, okay.
Guardian ad litem would be representing the kids in, in those situations if there's not a delinquency case with it. And we, when we first started doing this, you may remember, we were representing the kids at GALs and we were having a conflict out of so many cases because we were representing the parent on a, on a offense that would, that generated a parent case. We said, geez, we're, you know, we're going to end up representing the kid at GAL, but we're, we're getting out of these felonies, which is our statutory obligation. So that's why we did the switch.
I remember that.
And, and suggested that we, we wouldn't get out of it, we'll just represent the parents instead. And I think that that has worked to the benefit of all involved. The BMH is Board of Mental Health Commitments. And, you know, those have remained fairly static, as you can see. And paternity cases and child support cases, I would kind of lump those. And those are, those are, those are jobs that are, you know, starter jobs that we, we give the newer lawyers cases on that. What I try to do is give, even the newer lawyers, I want to give them some exposure to felonies, of course, with assistance. Because I found that if we had people that were just doing the child support and paternity cases, they were going crazy. And so we split it up, split it up with a bunch of people until they get to do misdemeanors and felonies, as well as the, the non-support cases.
But the paternity is mostly adult, not?
Oh, all adult.
All adult, okay. So I think we talked about this even last time. It just, it strikes me as very interesting that we can talk about crime going down in the city and it's touted quite a bit. And then all of a sudden, we have the public, oh, oh, public defender coming, and I know the county attorney will be too, that shows these numbers of felonies going up, well, all of them that we talked about going up. So anyway, I'm just, that just drives me crazy on how that is touted all the time. And yet our numbers and those, we can look at our juvenile detention center and we can look at our adult corrections facility, and those numbers don't drive with what's being said, so.
No, they don't. I've, I've seen, I've seen some of those numbers. And if you read the fine print, a lot of times it'll say, well, this isn't counting drug cases or firearm charges. Well, duh. I mean, those are, those are, there's a significant amount of the cases that we get.
Right.
You know, I saw, I saw one, honestly, in some meeting I went to and I, I saw how the crime rate was going down and I thought, what, what, what am I missing here?
Right.
And then I saw in the fine print, not, not, this excludes firearm charges and drug cases. Well, okay, that explains it a little better.
Right. Well, to me, this is the truer picture of what we're dealing with in the county in terms of crime. And again, we can see that our costs continue to go up. My last question is, another issue that's near and dear to your, my hearts is this public advocacy office. We're still at, last year, I think it was 438,000 or 400 and something thousand, or a couple of years ago, when we tried to get that money or at least half of it back. I still think that is a legislative initiative that we should put back on the table. Again, we here need those dollars to provide to our cases that we're seeing, not for it to go to Lincoln into some super fund for, at that time, it was Lancaster who was using that office the majority of the time. So I think that needs, we need at our legislative meetings with our senators to really take a deep dive in that and look at it. But tell me, so when we do, so their argument is, well, then use it. Tell me why we're not. Tell me why we should be. Tell me why we can't just get the money back.
They, their staff, they probably have five or six lawyers. And I don't really know all that much about the, the, what kind of deals they've got with Lancaster County, other than it does seem to me that there are a lot of cases that they handle in Lancaster County. When you talk to them, they, they will tell you, they, they won't take misdemeanors. They don't want to do misdemeanors. So that takes, they, they only want to do big cases.
Big cases.
And typically, what I see across the state is that some of the counties have opted not to have a public defender because the statute only requires, you know, if you have a certain population. The, I think the, the wider approach is, a lot of the counties out there have kind of banded together and, and made, made a public defender's office. Now, sometimes it's a contract PD and I'm not too hot on, on that idea because it usually goes to the low bidder, which is not always the best way to go.
Best representation, right.
And, you know, with, with, with only five or six lawyers, I don't know how they'd be of very much help to us. I know that I can tell you on the, well, Don could probably tell you better. They, they have a couple of cases, haven't they, up here?
Yeah, there's, they have two right now. I think Garcia days they're finishing this murder case. You got the other side?
Yeah, I, I'm involved in a murder case that's got a co-defendant. And originally, what happened is, Don and, Don and I have an agreement that if there's going to be multiple parties charged with an offense, I'll say, okay, who's the target defendant? So we keep that person and don't end up with someone that probably going to maybe turn state's evidence. And, you know, the cost of a private attorney not trying the case is substantially less than if the person is trying the case. What happened in that case is the, the target defendant, we got appointed to, and then they appointed outside counsel to the other defendant. And then the client that we had hired private attorney, and there really was no further conflict. And as the case progressed, the private attorney that was hired was not really up, I don't think up to speed. And the judge appointed Public Advocacy Commission to coach second chair with him. And then that didn't work out, so the Public Advocacy Commission has that case. I'm assuming that they're not charging the county for that, but I don't, I don't know. I'm assuming they are not. And the court administrator would be, district court administrator would be in a better position to tell you. I, I would bet they're not charging on that case. I don't know what the other one is that they're involved in. Don can tell you about that, I'm sure. We end up getting back into it because they, they charged the other guy with, that we didn't have at first, they charged him with another murder. And I called the judge and said, we don't have a conflict in this anymore. So they pointed us and relieved the other lawyers, who were very, very good lawyers. But, but because of the cost, they pu, put us on it. And so, you know, the, their, their involvement up here has been historically very, very small footprint. And most of their stuff is either in Lincoln or in what they call Greater Nebraska, I guess.
Right. Which is what it was created for?
Yeah, absolutely.
To begin with?
Yeah, yeah.
But, and again, I understand the positions that these smaller counties are in and how these cases, you know, the Norfolk case, I think, is what triggered it, if I remember right.
Exactly, with that, that.
Oh, the Nebraska City one, wasn't it?
With the cult?
Yes.
Ryan and that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that, they bankrupted whatever county that was.
That's right. Yeah, Richardson, right. Yeah. So, well, but anyway, I guess I still think it's worth having that discussion in terms of the dollars that could be being used here that are down at the state. And I know there was a compromise the last time we talked about it, which was very close, where we could get half of it back.
Yeah.
But anyway, I'd like to talk about that.
I hear you. I think that would be a, you know, if you got half of it back, I mean, by, by a long shot, Douglas County is the largest contributor to that fund.
Right.
Because every single case that's filed, including the case that Don files.
Right, right.
Go to, to that fund.
So now it's probably 500.
Well, and everything the city prosecutor files and everything Johnny Corrigan files, when he's acting as a private attorney. So, yeah, if you could get some of that back, it would probably relieve a little bit of the tension on the criminal justice costs up here.
Here, right. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Okay. First of all, I want to thank you and your staff for the hard work you do. And I've said that before, a few years ago, because I know you're here on weekends and now your people are here. I think what's important to at least state is, you know, this isn't something that we can put off. Basically, we're going to pay for it one way or another because we're mandated. I'm not certain all the citizens know when we do a budget. And it's nice to have Doug Kagan here from Nebraska Taxpayers. But if you weren't as committed as you are, and I'm not trying to be nice to you, I'm just being honest about it. If you weren't so passionate and committed as you are, what would be happening is the court would be appointing other attorneys and costing us more money than what you're asking for. And I stand to be corrected by any commissioner or citizen about that. This budget is about 3% over 148,000 over our target number that our good finance director, Joe Lorenz, provided with the 3% for the salaries.
Okay.
And it isn't, as I said, we are mandated to appoint someone as a public defender. It isn't something where we can say, we're only going to do half of the county roads and we'll let those go for the next year. We can't do that.
Nope. The US Constitution. The US Constitution says, if you're charged with a crime, it can go to jail. And can't afford an attorney, the government has to pay for it.
That's right.
End of story.
And we're in a very tough position on the budget. Commissioner Boyle and I met earlier this morning with Joe Lorenz talking about this. And the same thing's true with our correction facility. If we can't house them because we're overcrowded, we got to go out and contract somewhere else at a greater cost to do it. So I just want to thank you for the extra work that you do. And honestly, Tom, your passion that I've seen since I've been here about trying to do the right thing is really appreciated. And I just felt that had to be stated. And I thank you for that. And we'll continue to look at this and figure out how we deal with this challenge.
All right, well, thank you for the kind words. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Boyle? I, I wasn't going to comment because all the questions I had were really dealt with and the interest in time, but I can't sit here and be silent. I, I agree, you're, Tom, you're doing a terrific job. You always have. And I just want to thank you, really, for what you're doing. I have complete confidence in what you do. So, thank you.
Mine gets shaken sometimes, but.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
How many years have you been in the public?
I've been in the office for 43.
Wow.
And I was chief deputy in 83 and then got elected in 96, so, yeah. I was, I was Roger's hype when I started this job. I was.
I thought you were a lot taller. I remember that.
Yeah, I've you bet line a few times, haven't I?
Well, you only have about 17 more years to go and you'll wrap it up.
I don't plan, I don't plan, you know, one of the hard, hard things is, I'm one of these people that said, I don't really want to quit until the job's done. And one of the days, I guess I'm going to have to realize that this job ain't one that gets done.
Yeah.
But until then, I'm just going to keep trucking along as best I can.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Commissioner Borges?
We're glad we are, you're here with us, Tom. But can, when you talked about the ability to pay, do you feel that we're doing our absolute due diligence to determine whether someone has the ability to pay? Or could we improve a little bit on that?
That's a, that's a court function and a court function alone. The statutes of the state of Nebraska prohibit us from commenting at all. We could know, let's, let's say, we have a client who, when the judge makes the initial inquiry, the judge is satisfied that they don't have enough money to hire their own attorney. And then we find out that they inherited $2 million from a long-lost uncle or won the lottery. We cannot say anything about that. And the prosecutors are not really in a position to say anything about that either. That's a function for the court to handle and the court alone. Some judges are much more inquisitive than others. I will be, I would be less than honest with you if I didn't say that. I think they have to take into consideration, and if you get charged with a serious felony, you better have some bucks or you're not going to be able to hire your own attorney. Obviously, if you're getting charged with a shoplifting or something, you know, the cost is, isn't going to be prohibitive, although it's going to put a dent to anybody. The other thing is, judges, and with all due respect to all of them, hate pro se litigants. And so if someone says, I can't afford an attorney.
Was it meant in English?
What's that?
Was it meant in English?
Pro se litigants, it's people who are representing themselves.
Okay.
So let's say the guy gets arraigned and judge says, do you have a job? Yeah. How much you make? 14 bucks an hour. Do you have kids? No. And the judge says, you know what, I think you can hire your own attorney. Well, next court appearance, the guy shows up and he doesn't have an attorney and he says, well, I tried to hire someone and I didn't, they, they wanted X amount upfront and I didn't have it. So the judge is put in a position of, okay, do I have this guy represent himself, which is a very, not a very good use of time. is a very, not a very good use of time, because they don't typically know and what to do. And so a lot of times, they'll kind of say, okay, well, public defender's point, just so they can move the case along. And, you know, I, I, the thought of having people trying to represent themselves when they really can't, can't make it, that bothers me. I don't wanna see people, you know, getting charged with crime and going to jail or prison that aren't, aren't able to hire their own attorney, because, yeah, they may have a job. I think the statute says that you're indigent for purposes of appointment of counsel if paying an attorney would deprive you of the normal necessities of life. And that changes from person to person, you know? Obviously, a single person who's 30 years old and making 20, 25 or 35 grand probably can't afford to defend a murder case, but could probably afford to defend a misdemeanor or a lower-grade felony. So that, it's not as simple as sometimes we might think. And like I say, most times, the judges go, come down on the side of, well, I'm gonna appoint a public defender. And the flip side of that coin is, most people would rather hire their own lawyer. We're not their lawyer of choice. And most people, honestly, would rather hire their own lawyer than have us. So there's a balance that goes on, and I think that's part of the equation that the judges go, hey, you know, if this person could really afford an attorney, they'd probably hire one. So, but it's not a simple, a simple math thing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Tom, you have no more questions right now, but hold on, because I'm gonna have some.
Okay, all right.
Don, you wanna come up?
Thanks, Tom.
Good morning.
Don Klein, Douglas County Attorney, here because we are, our target, we missed our target. We're asking for about $380,000 more than our target, which is about 4%. The first thing I'd say is, I agree with Tom, we're very, you're very fortunate that we have the kind of staff that we do with the Public Defender's Office and the County Attorney's Office, because they're, quite frankly, if we went to best practices on caseloads for either one of our offices, we would be way over for each office with regard to the numbers that load our people are carrying. But they're willing to do it, and they work very hard, and they do a great job. The numbers I'm asking for, I'm not asking for anybody else, although I probably should be, it's all involved with costs. If you had that, that handout I gave you, and I think I shared it with Tom, maybe it's part of what he used also.
It's in the, it's in electronic.
Our numbers are gonna be, our numbers are gonna be a little bit different than his exactly, because we handle all the cases. They handle the portion of people who are indigent. So if somebody's represented by private counsel, then that's, that's, that's gonna be an additional. But we reviewed, if you looked at those numbers, we reviewed 10,000 cases in 2017. And by that means, we get referrals from the Omaha Police Department, the Douglas County Sheriff, the DEA, the FBI, Valley, Boystown, Ralston, Omaha Fire, all those different departments. So if you look at the increase just in the numbers that we reviewed, in 2015, we reviewed 6,770 cases. In '17, we reviewed almost 10,000 cases. And out of those 10,000 reviews, we filed 4,430, which is an increase of 348 more felony filings from the year before. So it's just, it's as simple as that. There's an increase in the number of cases that we're filing. And obviously, there's an increase in court costs. There's a filing fee that we pay for county court, there's a filing fee that we pay for district court. So the additional cases, additional filing fees, and that's what I'm asking for, because I know that that's gonna be an increase in our budget. Also, we did 474 autopsies last year, which is an increase of, let's see here, from 356 the year before. You know, just the number of people, the cases that we have, so that's, that's at a minimum at $1,200 that we pay the doctors in autopsy, which is by far a small expert fee that we're paying. If that went to the med center somewhere, we'd be paying $3,500, $4,000 per autopsy. And we pay $1,200 to our docs, who do a great job. But those are increased expenses that we have, when we have autopsies increase, we have filing fees increase. And so I'm just, we just figure things out, Lance did, in court-related costs, county court costs, autopsy and toxicology and district court costs are what I'm asking for, budgeting for. That's that increase there, not for any other employees at this point in time to handle those, those extra cases, but just, just to cover the costs that we have to pay that I don't have any control over, unless you want me to start coming to you and asking you, do you want me to autopsy this case, or do you want me to file this case? And that's, of course, I'm just, you know, joking. But that's, I mean, Pinky used to say that at times, I mean, my first boss a long time ago, do I have to go to the board and ask them if I should do as a coroner, do an autopsy on this case, because we don't have the money in our budget? So, you know, those are, it's very, very simple, it's very straightforward, there's an increase in costs. You see the work that our Civil Division does for you with Teresa and the cases that we handle there, our Juvenile Division, Nicole's here, the tremendous caseload that we have there, and then obviously, the felonies. We do, like I said, all the felonies. We also do all the misdemeanor domestic violence cases. We took those from the city a while back. We have, also do all the misdemeanor motor vehicle homicides, as far as misdemeanors go. But we've kind of divided up our office into certain areas, and I'm sure Tom has also, with regard to expertise, more experienced lawyers handling the more, more higher-profile, serious cases, which we have plenty of them. You read the, you read the newspaper, you see the news, the kind of cases we handle are the cases that your constituents and our constituents care about, have a great concern for regard to, first of all, public safety, and second of all, to make sure people have adequate representation when they're, they're charged with a crime. So that's, that's what we're talking about here. I'll be happy to go into anything in any more detail if you want me to, but what we're asking for is just simply to cover costs, so that I'm not coming back here next year in the middle of the year asking for, you know, more money, because our costs are so high that they've gone up and we can't cover them. And to some extent, I've been, you know, maneuvering money around, trying to be a good soldier by not hiring people immediately, by, by leaving maybe a gap for a period of time. But we can't afford to do that. You know, right now, I think, we had Chad Brown, who just got named a juvenile court judge, Jake Ennemach leaving our office to go into private practice for more money. We had a person, another person leave the juvenile court staff to go work for the district court judges. We had another lawyer that moved to Las Vegas, said, I haven't hired any replacements for those people yet, just to try and save a little bit of money, you know, in increments here, so, so that we can make our budget, because we always have tried to do the best we can to be good soldiers and, and come in and not have to ask for any, any supplement for our budget. So, yes.
Commissioner Boyle and Morgan.
Don, I want to ask you, and I think it's on your last page, is proposed budget and its 2018 slash 2019 difference. Can you, can you tell, it's cost center 42315 and goes on to, ends with 42398? I think it's, it must be on the next page.
Right, right. It's this page here.
All right, yeah. I want to ask you, on, what are the, first one, 42315, court and related costs? Are those filing fees?
No, the filing fees are the district court costs and the county court costs. The court-related costs are other expert witness fees, professional fees, anything to do with that.
Okay, great. And then the district court, and of course, it's county, we have to pay filing, you have to pay filing fees, don't you?
Right. Every case that we file, we pay a filing fee for the county court, and we pay a filing fee for the cases in the district court.
So first-degree murder, you have to pay a filing fee, which is pretty incredible. But I know that it's linked to the, because we talked about this before, it's linked to the judge's retirement, which is gonna be next to impossible to get out of. I mean, they're not gonna figure it out.
I think a portion of that goes to, a portion of it goes to the Public Advocacy Commission, a portion goes to different areas within the state budget also.
All right. And then I want to ask about, on the autopsies on 42338.
Sure.
Autopsies and toxology, the toxology. Are those, you're doing those for other counties and then you bill them, is that...
That doesn't include those.
Okay.
There's nothing on there about those out-of-county autopsies. This is just Douglas County.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Commissioner Morgan.
You for your presentation, appreciate it, and also the work that you and Tom do in opposite directions, but at the same time, the commitment that you have and your department has and your people. It'd be good for us, and not for Don to do it, but the look of those fees and how much we're now paying the state from what we were paying each year, because you're telling us, hey, this 400,000, thereabouts, 480, whatever, is not going to hire some new people. It's these filing fees and so on, and goes into that retirement fund too. So, Mr. Lorenz, Joe, we might want to at least look at what we're increasing monies to the state, so that it's known that we're paying here in Douglas County, again.
I'm sure, I'm sure we can get those figures, exactly.
Yeah, and I don't want you to waste time doing that, I guess. Whatever we can do to get some of those numbers, we'll work at getting that, just so we know. And then on the coroner, and those cost increases, we'll talk about that some as we did this morning, Commissioner Boyle, on the coroner situation. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. Any other questions?
Yeah. I got some for you and Tom. So let's, I guess my first request is, can you all, somebody provide me, I don't need exact science to the penny, but I need a separate breakdown of what's spent in juvenile court, what's spent on juvenile.
When you say what's spent, I mean, are you asking for filing fees or...
Everything that assigns to it. You got a separate division, so hopefully, it's a little easier. I mean, from salaries to fees, some approximate idea of what's spent separately on juvenile.
I can, I can get that breakdown for you, Tom.
As far as our office goes, we only have a couple of lawyers that only do juvenile court. I can give you the salaries of the lawyers who do cases in juvenile court, as long as you keep in mind that they also do some felonies as well. And as far as other costs go, the only additional cost up there would be if we do an independent psychiatric evaluation, which is rare, because the state is usually doing numerous evals. And when we do depositions, which would probably, in most cases, be more likely to occur in what I call those parent cases, not in the delinquency cases. The, you know, the workload from our office standpoint in juvenile court is primarily with the delinquency cases. We do have parent cases as well, as I said. And it's, it's pretty much in-court time. That's what it is. I can, like I said, I'll be happy to give you the salaries and say, here's, here's how many of these lawyers devote their entire time to juvenile court, and here's the lawyers that don't, and what their average felony caseload would be. I can do that. Is that acceptable?
That's fine. Like I said, I don't want the penny, but I want some idea of, out of, Don, a $9 million budget, a $5 million budget, what, what's the cost? If it's $2 million, okay. So my second line is, so for the county attorney, in 2016, there was a 3.9% axe, 2017, a 6.3% axe, 2018, a 6.2, this year, 6.5. Public defender's axe in 2016, 5.7 increase, 8.7 increase in 2017, 8.5 increase in 2018, this year, 4.3. So we've had a conversation about this, and this is the pre-detention hearings that's been happening a couple of years. We've met a couple of times about those, and we've talked, and they've started and stopped, and my understanding, you were there.
Were you talking about the percentage? I didn't get what you meant there. Were you talking about the percentage?
What's the amount? Not, not so much, well, when I'm saying percentage, this, this is the percentage asked is that you've asked before the board, budget-wise, for budget increases.
For a budget.
And to say that, let me add my comments on everybody else, that I, before I go to the questions, I appreciate the work done by everybody in office and agree with everybody's say. But with that said, for, we've met at least a couple of times to talk about the pre-detention hearings before juvenile court, that were, we were trying to have calls on at 11 o'clock. On two occasions, they've started and stopped, or for whatever reasons, not there. So my point is, I think the board's been pretty good in trying to grant you all's requests before you what you need. So I've tried to educate them data-wise, and my request is, you know, if you all want six figures, I want 20 minutes a day to try to have these hearings, and I need you all to commit to them. Because for the last, I don't understand why, I mean, I understand things are crunched, but Tom, like you said, you know, you do the work you need to do. And from my understanding, everything's proven that if you have these hearings, it could save 10 days or so, when we did the last count on it, in detention. But for some reason, for the last four years, and these are four years' worth of numbers I'm quoting, we can't make these meetings happen. So I, I want to ask you all publicly to have these meetings unequivocally, find a way to make it work. I'm not saying you do a pattern, but the fact you do a certain deal, but I need a commitment to have these meetings.
I, I can tell you that I've had meetings that you participated in and others where you were not present, that was more with court personnel. And I have told them constantly that we will go back to doing it if the judges will block the people out for that period of time. So for that 20 minutes, what I, what I would like to do is have the judges say, the, what I could, what I told them I would do is, I will give them the lawyer that is responsible for the detentions for the whole week, for, I'll give them the whole year's assignment. And all I ask them to do was not double-book, triple-book those lawyers for that short period of time. They refused to do it. I, like I said earlier, I can't have situations where a 14-year-old kid is coming to court and going, are you my lawyer today? Are you my lawyer? You're not the same person that was here last week. That's all, if you can, if you can get the judges to do that, I'm all in. I told them I would do it. I, I don't necessarily agree that it's going to make a big difference. We've done, we've done a hell of a lot of work right now. I mean, if you look at the youth center, what, with all the work we've done, the youth center is, what, half full now compared to what it was four, five years ago?
It's, it's more numbers than it is, but this, this is my question to you for that point. I, I heard that scheduled question a couple of times, and I could only go about two or three questions deep, so, and trying to ask and get an idea of what happens. This is, this is my understanding to both of you all. This is how it happened. My understanding, a couple of years ago, that there was a study or something done in juvenile court about the scheduling software, where there used to be a software that you schedule time in. My understanding is, after this study, all the parties involved agreed not to do the scheduling through that software. Some people may do it, some people may not. And I've talked to a couple of judges to ask this question. My understanding is, the process is supposed to be, after hearings, detention hearings, or whatever it is, all the parties go to the bailiff and they set a calendar, okay? But my understanding is that if the bail, if you don't do that, the bailiff then puts you on a calendar. My understanding is, the process that was agreed to is not being followed by the parties. So when, so when the bailiff then, when you don't go to them and set up a schedule, when the bailiff puts you on a schedule, you can't come back to me with the argument and say, it's the calendar, when you're not adhering to the original process. I will go up there and get my head handed to me if I'm advocating for you all for a calendar and people aren't following the process that was agreed to.
They aren't the one, they're the, the bailiffs are the ones that aren't following the program. I am not going to sit here and tell you that every single time that someone goes to the bailiff afterwards, part of the reason is because they've been double-booked already and they don't have the time to do it, because they have to go to another courtroom immediately after the other one, because Judge X is screaming at the lawyer in Judge Y's courtroom, why aren't you here? If we continue to do this kind of stuff where we have cattle calls, at, okay, everyone gets it for nine o'clock. So you go up there and you'll see 12 or 13 lawyers standing around and one case being called. So everyone's gonna be there at nine o'clock until they get done. So, everyone's getting ready there at nine o'clock until they get done. Courtroom B doesn't care about that, because they've got a cattle call going, too, and all these check hearings and all these other things. I can tell you that, you know, they have the same problem that we do, but mine is a little different in that we represent that kid, that human being, who doesn't deserve to have multiple lawyers showing up. And, you know, if you want to go, I'll go up with you, I'll be happy to, and face any of the bailiffs or judges that are saying that we're not doing what we're supposed to do, and call them out.
They're saying it's hard, I'm just saying, I'm just hearing the size of it. They're saying, now, in one meeting, they said, don't blame us for the groups not being able to get together real quick before the piece. And my understanding on their end is that they say, the term I hear is, that's just a part of lawyering. So, I don't have any problem doing that, but the fact is, is that there's not a lot of leverage you have on there.
That's right.
And so, I'm not saying you do it, because my understanding is, probation's offered to do it at different times, offered to do it then, but the group needs to meet to find out what the formula is that succeeds.
We also told them we'd do it over to the lunch hour, where there wasn't double-booking, and they decided they don't want to do that either. I mean, we're a little commed.
I didn't, I didn't hear that. But if you all, I'm just asking, I want, if you all tell me that it is that you are going to do it, then that can be worked on, but I need you all to be there, not negotiating. We'll do it for sixty days. I need it to be there, because you need to work through the process to do it, and you can't start and stop it.
Well, what I will tell you is, I'll commit to doing it, but if it gets to the point where it's not productive, I'm going to speak up and say, hey, we have lawyers that have work to do, and if this is not productive, what is the point of doing it? But I'm not just going to pull out. I would talk about it, and say, here's what the problems are, here's what the issues are. The, you know, the juvenile court, in my four decades here, has been very stubborn about adhering to how it's my way or the highway. And you're right, Don and I don't have much leverage over them, and we keep saying, don't double-book us, don't do that, and they continue to do it. And what am I going to do?
I agree.
They'll say, well, go get someone else to represent Johnny. And well, the someone else, if they have to send someone else, they don't know about the case. If I have to send someone else, they don't know about the case, so we sit there and, Your Honor, can we continue this two more weeks, please? And the kid sits in the youth center for two more weeks. That's the problem.
So, let me ask you a question about that piece of it, about assigning it. So, let me use an analogy. Basketball team, coach asks players. Players go in the game, that player is expected to fulfill that role or position. I'm not a lawyer, but this is my understanding, is that it's a principle understanding, or that if a person gets a case, the person should be ready to handle the case. Just like if a person goes in the game, you gotta be ready to play. There's no deal. What happened to, what happened to, you're saying, basically, you're saying that the person assigned to the case doesn't have the case, you can't move, but my understanding is, you get the case, you need to be ready to make the call.
Yeah, if you're there. That's the point, is you're getting, if a judge tells the bailiff or someone else, go to the other courtroom, where our lawyer is standing, waiting in line to get to their case, or is adjudicating a case, and say, hey, Judge so-and-so needs you down in courtroom three, you say, I'm sorry, I'm in the middle of this, I can't leave here, we'll get someone else to do it then. Go get, oh, there are two other public defenders standing here, go get them to do it. Well, then nothing gets done. Don, am I wrong?
Don, if I could answer, could I answer also?
Let's go. I mean, no, it was just, I wanted to make it fresh while it was brought up.
Well, first of all, with regard to the commitment, you and I have spoken before, in the end of November, we committed to doing this phone call thing, and it never happened. Okay, so.
My understanding, and Nicole stepped up, because it's my understanding, my understanding, because there was an exchange, and I saw the exchange, and said, okay, you committed to doing it, but then we wanted to negotiate that we just do it for sixty days. And this is what I'm saying. I understand the issue, but you can't come into it that, we'll do it for a certain amount of time and see if it works. The question is, you need to do it to make it work.
Well, it is kind of, see if it works.
Yeah, but you need to do it to make it work.
We were committed to do it to try to see if it would work.
But you can't be negotiating times. If it's an issue with doing it at lunch, then we have to talk to that, but you, we can't go into it like, it's thirty days, if it doesn't work after thirty days, it's not, because it's not going to just probably work in thirty days, it needs time to make itself flow.
That's fine with me, except, but I want to be able to say, after X amount of time, if it's not working, this is not.
Then you should change it, you should find how it changes, not stop it.
That's all, I would choose to be option one.
Okay, well, that's different than, I just want to make sure that's different than saying, stop it, it's, let's find a way to make it work. Because tomorrow, a group of us are getting ready, and I'm not, I don't want to blame you, your court's overloaded, okay? Tomorrow, a group of us are trying to go to South Dakota to see how this function in another place. So, once this comes back, there'll be suggestions, and I need everybody to be all in on how it works.
And one of my deputies is going in.
They are.
Okay.
But nobody from your office is going.
But from the standpoint of, if you look at when, I'm just talking about when I started here, 2007, and the census at the Juvenile Detention Center, then, to where it is now, it's a tremendous improvement. It's like fifty percent of what it was before with regard to detention. And I also talked to one of the judges last Friday about the average length of stay issue question, and the judge told me, and said that Karen Shin, who is also an expert that was brought in here, said that the way we keep our numbers is wrong, because you're not including people who are street-released immediately from, you know, not going into detention at all. The people who are street-released aren't included on the statistics, and that makes a big difference, obviously, in what the length of stay looks like. The judge has told me that, and Karen Shin has told me that also, that that's not included in the numbers. Those people who are street-released immediately aren't included. Well, they're never detained, so they should be part of the statistics also.
And let me clarify those numbers, because those are all the numbers, there's two sets. With JDAI, there's the QRS, which the board has been brought, and they understand. The numbers you're talking about are overall numbers that include people that get out in twenty-four hours. With JDAI's numbers and how the process is set to the QRS, it excludes those, and it just counts juveniles. From those numbers, our case processing, the possibility of case processing could help reduce some of the time of stay. Now, I'm not saying it's all, because the point you made in one meeting was the psychology deal, that's another piece. There's other points in the process, but the best example to use, Nebraska had the spring football game this week. The coach said, we got the best time in the world. If we don't block, if we're weaker than the other team, it don't give, it don't matter. All the other stuff going on, this pre-detention hearing is like ground one. And from those numbers that they have through the QRS, and there's another study that was done by a student, it says, it produced a result that said, if you all get together, there's possibly a ten days less time. And all I'm asking is to get together, because there's been things said, you know, like the study is not validated. The study's good enough to be raising an eyebrow, and all I'm asking, I'm just asking, find twenty minutes to get together, stay committed to the process to make it work, and don't opt out after a certain amount of days if it's not. If it's not going there, I need the group to work together, because there's no way, because there's been some, there's going to be some plans to try to get you all in the room together and just have it out. Because I've heard it from both ends, but.
There's not a problem between our office and Mr. Riley's office.
No, 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 it's the group and the judges, because I've tried to understand this thing from both ends. And I have, I will more than gladly argue that case, because no matter, if we get in the room, there's a different power dynamic. The board is on another peer with the judges, you all have to go before them, you can say your point, but there's a whole different power dynamic. I'm fine to make the ask, but I can't make the ask if you all aren't having the meetings, because the fallback will say, you all don't even have the meetings. Why should we do this?
All right, well, we understand, and we're committed to trying to do this, but, I mean, there is a fundamental difference, as Tom has stated, with between his, I can interchange somebody a lot easier than he can with regard to the case. He's got a client, I can send somebody there who can cover for somebody else who might know a little bit about the case, look at the file, and be able to go to that hearing. I don't think that's that luxury that you have.
If you, when I hear the word "coverage," it's fingernail down the blackboard for me. I don't want coverage, I want the person who's assigned to the case. And don't forget, when we're talking about this pre-detention thing, we're, no one's assigned to the case yet. I mean, this is the first, this is before the first court appearance, right?
Let me ask you, so, you made a, and I'm going to give it up and come back to it, nobody's assigned to it. I'm not a, but from my understanding is, you said you don't have issues in discovery, I'm assuming that was adult. Do you have issues in discovery in juvenile?
No, no, we don't. I don't. We had a few.
That's not what I hear, but I'll take it in.
We had a few issues that we've ironed out, because we sat in a room and figured it out, and that's all. And, you know, don't get me going on discovery, because it's not these guys that usually are causing the problems, it's further down on Fifteenth and Howard that's causing the problems on the discovery. They can only give me what they get, and whether it's a juvenile court case or an adult case, it's the same source.
And, but that's my point with it, because it's been four years, and my thought is, if we could have gotten in the room and made the thing work, we could have been there. And I don't doubt any of your issues with time, but it's like, everybody else in the country can do it, and they probably got issues, too. So, after four years, I'm like, I hear nails on the chalkboard when I hear this after four years, and we can't make it work.
Well, I think we need to look forward, not backward. I certainly agree with that.
I'm more looking forward, but I need to look backwards, so I can set the stage to make the ask. And I'm saying, the board's going to get these quarterly QRS reports, and I'm asking you all in public to commit to it, I'm assuming you are. Okay, because when these reports come, the question I'm going to ask, what's going on with the meetings?
Okay, and I'll do the same thing, but I just want to make one comment about it. One of the issues that we've had about this is the difference between fifty-three days and forty-five days, or something to that effect. And I don't see how that is germane. If the difference was ten days to one day at the beginning of the detention, that would make sense to me. If someone's in for forty-five and fifty-three, I don't see correlation there, and that's why I've had problems with it.
Well, this is what a correlation is today, because you all are talking budget, because the price now is three hundred and three dollars a day. So, for ten days, that adds up when you got ninety-six.
If you could show me, if you could show me how this impacts the difference between forty-five days and fifty-three days, that's one thing. If you were telling me, if you participated in these calls, the kid would get out in one or two days, but since you don't participate in the call, the kid's there for ten days, then I'd say, okay, I see the correlation between the calls and the length of stay. When you're telling me there's a difference between forty-eight days and fifty-three days, I just don't see the correlation. That's my issue.
I got that, and I'll show it to you.
Well, and the other thing to point out is that we don't, that the judge makes the determination about detaining somebody.
And they ain't part of the.
Not us.
Call.
But half the battle, my understanding is, and this is what happened in a public meeting, is that half the battle is, at some point, you all got to get together and kind of present a option for this kid, if you all worked it out. So, if you haven't gotten together before the deal, you have to wait and then get together sometime and give the judge a result. Am I wrong in understanding that?
Just remember one thing, we're not the guardian in light of the child, we're the child's lawyer. And if the child says, I don't want to go to Boys Town, I don't want to go to some group home, I want to go home, we have to advocate for that, even if we don't think it's necessarily in the kid's best interest. That's what a guardian in light of does. So, if they want detention, and our kid says, I want to go home, that's what we advocate for. And we don't have a choice to say, you know what, at a meeting beforehand, I think the kid would be best off at Boys Town instead of going home to, because his mom's a drug addict or whatever. That's not something we can do. If the kid says, I want to go home, that's our obligation. Just like if I go to an adult sentencing, and my client, who's charged with four counts of robbery and four counts of use of a firearm, says, I want you to advocate for probation, I'll tell him, the chances of getting probation are about like me dunking a basketball. And, but if he insists that that's what he wants us to do, that's kind of what we have to do. We don't have that choice. So, there's a difference there, as to what we can and can't do, and we can't agree to something on behalf of our client that the client doesn't want.
I relinquish and come back, Nicole, you'd like you want to get in, then I'll go to Commissioner Boyle and then Commissioner Boyes.
Nicole, do you have anything?
Go ahead. Excuse me, may I do that? Someone wants to.
You know, you're next. I just want to say, Nicole, you might jump in, and I'm going to go to.
What I want to say, I'll say earlier when we discussed this this morning before the meeting, it's my opinion, I have very limited experience in juvenile court, and I have been involved in those cattle calls, and it's really unbelievable. What I want to ask is, with my limited experience, when I was practicing in district court, there was a progression calendar that helped a great deal. I mean, when I started practicing, there was no progression calendar, it was a free-for-all. I mean, I was given cases that had been filed seven years in advance, and, you know, it was nuts. Anyway, the point is that, I wonder whether, I'd like to ask you, it's my opinion that the responsibility for all of this, and I don't want to be bashing the court, because we've been accused of that in the past, but the judges are in charge of all of these things. I mean, you are very important players in the system, and the attorneys as well that come up there are at the beck and call of the court system. And so, if you don't have something that, the judges don't have something that they have to do, they'll do it any way they want to, and they'll do these calls all the time and conflicting where everybody has to be at different places at different times. And I've gone in, and I had a client that was supposed to get some kind of a psychiatric study done, and the person in charge of it from each Department of Health and Human Services was gone. So, it's postponed for two months to get it. And so, this kid lingers. I mean, it's outrageous what happens. So, I am going to, this is not bashing, but I lay it at the feet of the judges. They have to get control of this system, so that your lawyers are representing, they don't have all these people walking in and strangers trying to speak for them. It doesn't work. So, I would like to do whatever I can, and I think the board does as well, we want to see this function in a way that serves the clients best, and you are the folks who can tell us how to do that. And I promise you that I will do everything I can to try to make this system work, so that it's the best interest of the child and the clients. So, that's what I say. And let me know, let us know what we can do to make this happen, if we possibly can. Maybe it's a progression calendar of some sort, maybe that's naive, I don't know, but you let us know, you're the experts.
When you speak of the courts, I just start off with that, when you name four years, this goes back approximately two years, and I want to share this with all of you, because I don't know if everyone knows this, but we were participating, the Douglas County Attorney's Office, Juvenile Division was participating in the phone calls, and everybody is in agreement, all parties, that we are participating at ninety-eight percent. That means every single day, I believe they kept track for a twelve-month period of time, that we are on ninety-eight percent of the calls, and that's a lot of calls. And you speak of a judge, on the record, after one of the calls, we had a judge quote say, I could care less about your damn phone call. Continue to say, yes, I think it is clear to everybody that not any piece of information provided to the court today by the legal parties has been accurate or reliable. These phone calls are not productive. Someone needs to take charge, and that someone needs to be the state, since the state is the mover in all of these. And I'm all for collaboration, but not when collaboration removes accountability and ultimate decision-making, because then all anybody does is blame the we rather than the I. And that's what happened to our office, when someone participated in a phone call and relied on the information that was given in that phone call, and went in to cover a hearing. And based on that criticism that we received, after the ninety-eight percent participation and being told that they're not productive, and that we're relying on bad information, we took a break from those calls. This was August of 2016, that hearing. We started working then throughout 2017 on how we could make those calls better. In the beginning of 2017, we had a meeting, Don, Tom, myself, Commissioner Rogers, there were several other people in the room, and the way we left the meeting was that you and some of the others that participated in the meeting were going to go back to the judges and see if you could accommodate what Don and Tom had said here today. Nobody reached back out to us. At least four months went by, and I sat at an OIS meeting in June of 2017 last year, and heard repeated criticism about our offices, both our offices not participating in the phone calls, but we had never heard back from the meeting three months before. So, on that day, I did an email to every single person on the OIS committee, indicated that I had just talked to Don and Tom, and that we would start phone calls the following business day at noon, so that we could all be present on the calls. We were told no. Several more months went by, and we met on November 22nd of 2017, the day before Thanksgiving, in Judge Daniels' courtroom. I was there, Judge Daniels was there, Joy was there, other people were there, and the agreement was made. Tom was there. And the agreement was made. Tom was there. On Monday, we will begin the phone calls at noon. We would like to do this for a four-week period of time so that we can check back with one another and see if they're productive, if they're substantive, if there's a benefit for all parties involved. I went back and told Don that very day, we're committed to doing it, starting Monday. That was November twenty-second. And since that day, still through today, they have not began. And I'm told, meeting after meeting after meeting, that it said that our two offices are not participating in the phone calls. When we've been willing to participate in the phone calls for almost twelve months now, admittedly having taken a break because of what was said to us on the record and because we didn't wanna participate in something that was, then we're being called, that we're not being held accountable. We're giving away our decision-making powers and that the information is not reliable. And when you talk about the hearings, I wanna tell you that what was agreed to as far as scheduling is not happening. And I can definitely tell you it's not because of the Douglas County Attorney's Office. And I can tell you that there's attorneys working on Saturdays and Sundays on a regular basis as well. And I can tell you that they post their calendar conflicts every single Thursday and cover for each other. And at this time, there's approximately ten of them providing coverage for each other. They're covering a hundred and fifty calendar conflicts per week. That's in addition to their own caseloads that are anywhere from two hundred to over three hundred. So in addition to their cases, they're posting. I'm double booked, I'm triple booked, I have an eleven eighty-four meeting, I have to go order, argue in front of Nebraska State Supreme, the Supreme Court. I have to argue in front of the Court of Appeals. I have to be at a deposition. Again, I'm double booked, I'm triple booked. Would someone please help me cover these ten to fifteen hearings that I can't do myself this week? They post those and then they all cover for each other. And when someone's stuck in the courtroom because the judges do not run on schedule, we have a text string. And they're texting, all of us are on the one string. I'm stuck here, can someone please go here? And they are a team and they work exceptionally hard. Seven days a week responding to emails and texts, evenings and weekends because the cases continue, the removals continue on evenings and weekends. And never does any of them not respond or not say, how can I help? Whether or not, again, it's at night or on the weekends or during the day because someone's double or triple booked. They pick it up and they go do the best they can. So our office, we want to work with everybody, every agency from CPS to probation to public defender's office. We want to participate in productive phone calls that will benefit juveniles. That's our commitment, our dedication and our desire. We simply want it to be the best that it can be. And at noon works, even though they won't even get to eat lunch, because they know, they know that case. Because a lot of them coming in at detention hearings are the warrants and runaways, so those do have an assigned attorney. They simply wanna be the ones on the call so they can say, this is what I know, so it's productive. And then they wanna be the one to go into their hearing that afternoon so they know what was said on the call.
So let me say thank you for that. Let me, and let me back up. Because, let me recall what I recall from that. I, I don't recall committing to getting with the judges because my point has always been, I can't sit down with them unless you all agree to me consistently. So, if that's the case, I'm, I'm fine with that. I remember the discussion up there in nine oh three, but I, I'll take that here. The point of the meetings, my understanding is, yeah, you, you, the, the thing about getting together, I think we have some case processing on Casey. I can get that clear. So that's, we'll go from there. But yeah, I, I agree. Everybody says you have a ninety-eight, ninety-seven percent attendance rate. But then I go back to the question I asked about, can you make the call? Are you ready to play when you get in the game? Yeah, you showing up ninety-eight percent, but the person that shows up is not ready to play. Meaning, my understanding is, if a person has, may, may not be their case, you show up on the call. But when you show up on the call, be ready to play. You can't come in the game and say, it's not my position. So that's my understanding with the ninety-eight percent. I don't doubt the commitment at all. The only thing I'm saying is, to your point of the email exchange, I remember one email exchange. And after we walked out the e, the meeting, the email exchange was, it was like a negotiation, a, a start in volley of a negotiation to do them. And what I'm asking is, I don't wanna negotiate. I want the group to agree to do them and let's keep doing them until we make it work. I hear your point with the judges and I'm sure they will hear it now, so this is the first stake. Because I'm gonna just tell you, this is my point for the year. And every meeting is going to come up because there's no way, as accomplished as you all are, as hard as you work, that we can't find a way to make it work. And that's all I'm asking. Commissioner Boyes.
Well, I, I think.
Commissioner Boyes was first then.
Well, my, mine's going off in a little bit different direction because of listening to everything that's been said. This is again, one of those, um, where I think everybody had very good intentions in building what we have as a juvenile system right now. My personal opinion from even sitting up in those courtrooms and watching, um, for a few hours here and there, there's way too many people involved in these cases. Way too many. And, you know, you can sit there and you can hear five people on this side and five people on that side. And then finally you're hearing from the child and their parents and everybody's talking in different directions. And again, it's, to me, it's craziness. And so if there were a study to be done, if there were some reforms to be done, I honest to God believe we should start looking at the fact that there's too many people involved in the case. And that, I think, would move things along, um, a lot better as well. The other issue is, and, um, maybe it's a meeting with, um, Chief Hevickin, um, again, about the juvenile court and the calendaring issue. Um, that may be something that, um, Commissioner Rogers a, and I can have with him. Um, because again, it, everybody is affected by it, it, within the system. And so if nobody knows what that real true calendaring is, I know they're doing a little better job of it. But, um, maybe we need to talk to him about that as well.
Could I say something about that?
Come on.
You're one thousand percent correct. There's too many cooks spoiling the broth. Unfortunately, most of them are statutorily required, so it takes legislative, uh, action to undo it. What I, what my experience has been, and I, you know, I don't go up there as much as, as probably Don does and I'm certainly not up there. And I echo everything Nicole said. I wanted to give you a standing O, uh, 'cause you're right. But what, what, what the, what the real problem is, one of the problems is, because there's so many players, there's so many substitutes up there. So someone from HHS comes, doesn't know anything about the case. Someone from probation office, it's, it's all this coverage stuff that we, we're just talking about. So the lawyers, could be the, the lawyers that are handling the case and they're ready to go and they know what's going on. But, eh, the HHS caseworker is, is brand new and didn't get the evaluation done. So like Commissioner Boyle said, two months later, we're back doing the same thing. Or someone from the probation office, the, I mean, the turnover in both of those places has been astronomical. And then when you have guardians of items, you have, you know, foster care review peo, I mean, it's, it's chaos.
Here's my, um, th- this is how I look at systems and maybe it's a little bit too simplistic. But I sit here and I think, um, with this system, if that was my child, would that be okay? And my answer is no. It would not. It would not be okay if it was my child that was sitting wherever they are within the system. So why is it okay? Why are we prolonging any change or reform to this for everybody else's child within this county? And so that's, that's my drive, is to try to figure out how to streamline the system. And again, I think everybody had great intentions when they were looking at the systems, making sure that the child had what the child needed or the family had what they needed. But we never, when we kept adding, we never went back to see if what we had was working. And now I think we just have a whole lot of people fumbling over each other, um, in causing a, a much more longer length of the process than need be. So anyway, I think we still need to look at that, um, all of the players legislatively and say whether or not they are all needed. Um, and again, not to try to, um, take away what the child or family needs. But my goodness, it is, it is craziness up there when you sit in those courtrooms and see how many people have their fingers and, um, opinions in that case. So.
I, I'd call your attention to, uh, since I've been here, there have been four or five studies of juvenile court. And the most recent one was probably five, six, seven years ago in the Kalmanoff group. And I, I think I sent a copy of it to, to some of the, some of the folks. And I, I'm not going to quote Mr. Kalmanoff, uh, when he gave his summary because it was laced with profanity. But he said, you just spent X amount of money to have me do a study and come up with exactly the same recommendations that the previous three people who did studies recommended. And you haven't done squat to change anything. And the people who can, can effectuate the change the most wear black robes.
Right.
And they didn't wanna hear it.
Right.
And I was sitting there.
Right. I agree.
Commissioner Boyle.
What's been, what's been said, particularly Commissioner, Commissioner Boyes and I agree with. I wouldn't want my grandchildren to go through that system the way it is. And, and again, I, I can only rely on you and I think the responsibility is with the judges. That's where this all has to come from. And, um, you know, another study isn't necessary. I think we've got enough to, to know where we should be going with this. But, um, it's very bothersome and I, maybe we need to do something dramatic about the H, uh, Health and Human Service people that show up or don't show up to change. I mean, it's a, that's, we need to look at all of these functions and maybe frankly, take over some of that so that we can control the people who are there. And the judges are gonna have to come up with, I, I'm, again, I'm not an expert on it, you are. But I think we need to know, uh, you know, who or what can fix this. If we are, if we already know, then let's get on it, let's implement it.
Well, if we have, how many district court judges we have, Don?
Sixteen.
We have sixteen district court judges and we don't have this problem.
Right.
And we have, what, six juvenile court judges and we have a terrible problem. Do the math.
Yeah.
Now, there's some new judges coming in and coming in, maybe the new blood will make some changes. I've got my fingers crossed. I, I think they're good people.
That's so true. I mean, we, you know, we don't have a problem in the district court with sixteen different judges that we have to answer to with all of our people.
Absolutely.
That we have a problem in juvenile court scenes when we only have six judges.
Well, they just, I mean, you know, and, and observation, I mean, this cattle call thing up there and, but the subject matter. I mean, there's a cattle call on the civil side, but that's totally different, you know, with evictions and silly and things like that. But this is dealing with kids and the place is jammed and it's, you know, it is a waste of time. So we, we need to have them mimic what the district court is doing and progression calendars and all the rest of it has to be implemented. It really does. But again, I, I'm not gonna try to impose in my ideas on this. I'm not actively engaged so much anymore. But I do rely on you to tell us what parts of these studies or whatever, uh, not gonna be a quick fix necessarily, but what needs to be done and who can fix it. I think I have a good idea, but I need to have you tell us.
And, and I came here for a budget hearing and it's kind of into a forum about juvenile court. And I think these are important questions to talk about, but we could spend a lot of, you know, it, it's different in juvenile court too because the case never goes away. There's not a completion usually period.
It's a budget discussion because it's, it's costing us money, so it's a budget discussion.
Yeah.
Commissioner Morgan.
First, I wanna thank Nicole for an excellent, excellent presentation. Appreciate your points. And now you went back and threw it all. The other thing, uh, which maybe is a little self-serving, Commissioner Boyle, but I think having these discussions here on the budget and so on instead of up in nine oh three is really helpful to the citizens and everyone to see and hear what we're trying to do and what we're going through and some of the challenges. So I thank you for your time. I'm sorry it took so long, but they were great points and really appreciate your participation so much and your points. Really appreciate it.
You go in, then I gotta end.
Thanks.
Doug, if you have something, come on. There's, there's you, Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Boyes have really taken an interest in this area and we appreciate that. So it's not that we're, but, but, and, and Commissioner Boyle, so I mean, there needs to be some things. We don't have control, maybe it's, it's legislative or judicial that probably has the biggest
That's right.
ability to make some sort of impact in that system. Uh, we can try and, and, and we're all there because we really believe, as you do, uh, what's in the best interest of the child. That's, that should be the bottom line here. And that's the purpose of juvenile court. So anything we can do, we're willing to.
And, and my closing point on that is, I hear your argument for sixteen versus six. But the unfortunate thing is, you know, I don't know if the state's gonna pay for ten more. The state may pay for one or two more. But if it's sixteen and six or sixteen and seven or eight, you may not ever get that ratio. Only thing I'm asking is can the players get together and find what works for the six?
Well, I think the point is, is, as commissioners, that we can, we can handle scheduling with sixteen judges. But how come, how come it's a problem when there's, there's only six courtrooms to go to? We're saying it, it should be something, yeah, it should be easier. Not, not that we need more judges, but how come it's so hard to schedule?
Totally. Well, to your point, as of the meeting, the OAS meeting Thursday, unfortunately you couldn't be there. That, that was the commitment out the room. So that, that meeting, that originally be, was talked about the board, probation, relevant people from you all's office and the court, we're looking at scheduling. So that is going to happen here. So, so, okay. With that, thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Doug.
Yeah, you're still on this i- item, so if you want to come to the mic. Come to the mic though, uh, come to the mic.
I mean.
Doug Kagan, uh, four sixteen South Hundred Thirty Street, rep, representing Nebraska Tax Payers for Freedom. And I have three short questions for the county attorney. Is there any more progress being made on consolidating the city and county attorney's office that would save taxpayers money?
Doug, that's something that I, I tried to get accomplished and it's a question of, I, I think there should be one prosecutorial entity, uh, in the county. Most counties are that way. And it's an antiquated system. There used to be the municipal courts and, and that's, that's gone. So, uh, you know, I, I've, I've talked to the city about that. I, I've talked to some of you folks about it. So I, I, we could restart that process, but I didn't, haven't gotten anywhere yet.
And, um, would you save any money by discontinuing hiring interns for your office?
Hiring interns?
Yeah. Do you still hire interns or not?
We have law clerks, uh, is what we have and, and we need them. They do, they do running, they do, uh, research, they do memos, that kind of thing. So it's, they're, they're, I think we pay them minimum wage. And so we get a pretty good, they, they get a lot more from us from the experience they gain, uh, by learning about the law than, than our cost factors there.
I see. And lastly, would you save any money by taking testimony from expert witnesses long distance rather than bringing them here physically?
Well, I mean, there, there's a, the constitution has a confrontation clause. And the defendant has a right to confront the witnesses against them. And so we need to have that person come here to testify. But certainly, there are times when we could take depositions and in lieu of, of testimony, maybe that we can do it that way. And we do do that. They take, the public defender takes depositions, we take depositions. But as far as the trial, the person usually, usually has to be there because there's a confrontation clause issue.
Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
I, I had a few questions for the public defender, if I may.
Please.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I have the paperwork from your, uh, your budget here. And, um, just real quick question, your, your parking, you're asking more for your parking fees. Is that because of more employees?
Yes. And, and the friends go up? Although we have a second county car. That's why, that's the reason.
And, uh, I think you answered that one. And, uh, this may seem like a silly question, but you asked for more, uh, furniture. Have you ever, uh, sought to go through, uh, getting secondhand furniture from places?
We get, we get it all the time from the county. Uh, we get, hand me down from the county frequently.
Okay. And, uh, are you still getting revenue from the Sherwood Foundation?
No, no, we aren't, no, no.
Have you, you still apply for it or?
We have on a couple of things, but we're, we, we don't wear the white hats, you know.
I get you. And I had, I think I had one more question here, if I can find it. Again, uh, Again, can you save some travel expenses by doing business by telephone, long distance?
Our travel expenses are miniscule. The main, the main travel expense that we have is the mileage going to and from the hospitals for the border mental health hearings. They're held, not in the courthouse, they're held at the various hospitals. And sometimes we can use the county car, sometimes we can't, and if we can't, then the employee is entitled to the mileage. That's what the vast majority of that is. Most of the time, I mean, much of the chagrin of the lawyers in our office, we don't send them to Las Vegas for seminars or, and that's where they have them, you know, they don't have them in Bismarck, North Dakota, they have them in Vegas and Miami, and that doesn't look too good, so.
Okay. And let's see, I covered that. Do you still have an immigration attorney to handle things as interpreter, as an interpreter?
He left, and we have a new person that'll be starting to replace him in, I think, first of July.
Is that legally required?
Is what legally required?
To have an immigration attorney handle that?
First of all, the person that we use for immigration, there is a legal requirement to advise them of the possible immigration consequences, every client. The first question we ask them is, in Spanish, ¿de dónde naciste? In English, it's where we born. And if the person was born out of the United States, then we have a constitutional obligation per the Supreme Court to advise them of the possible immigration ramifications, which is a very specialized field for any conviction. And depending on their status, it will, it will make a difference. The other thing is, I have, how many Spanish-speaking lawyers do we have? Three? And the immigration one will be four. I'll take more, and that saves a big amount of money. We don't, that way, when we go to the jail, we assign the case to a Spanish-speaking attorney, we don't have to hire and pay for a interpreter to go with us.
Okay.
And the other thing is, the reason we hired an immigration, and we got that originally from the Sherwood Foundation, is to get people out of the jail that were there on ice hold, sitting there for six, seven, eight months, at a cost of however much it is per day.
Nine dollars.
Most of those folks don't know anything about what they should be doing, they have no right to counsel, but if you have an attorney, most of the time they'll say, "I don't want to sit here in jail for eight or nine months, I'll go back home to Mexico." Now, what they do after they go to Mexico, I can't control, but I can control how long they sit in our jail by getting them into the immigration court quickly and getting their case disposed of. So I have to pass them to our county.
Okay. I asked you this question, I think, a couple of years ago. Did you ever ask the bar association to provide attorneys pro bono to take care of some of your overload?
No, I haven't, and I don't think that's anything I can do. There, the, there's a conflict, group of lawyers, and they're going to get paid by whatever the statutory rate is. I don't have any control of that. That would be the bar association, and I don't think the bar association is going to endorse pro bono in criminal cases.
That's all I have.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tom.
Any other comment for the public on this related item, please?
Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good to see you. Everybody looks happy and well.
You're bad.
See, I've got a couple of things I want to ask about, is who's, who's running this railroad?
You are.
Well, you know, I've been sitting here for quite some time, listening to conversation back and forth, and this is for more money. Don needs more money, this other gentleman needs more money, because we have some disconnects here, so we need more money. Well, gentlemen, I'll tell you what, you raised the rent on my house last year, and if you raise the rent on my house this year, I'm going to come looking for you. Okay?
Yeah.
You know what the rent was? Remember we talked about that? We have to become more efficient. Now, I didn't hear one thing said by anybody about anything here. Don, I've known him for a long time, seen him on TV from time to time, he doesn't remember me from years ago, but I remember him because I see him on TV from time to time. We aren't doing a thing in our community here, the city of Omaha, in our county, in our state, to discourage this crime areas. I hear one person say, "God, crimes down." Well, on the other hand, crime is up here. You know, I don't think anybody knows what's really going on here, but we, we're not doing anything to discourage people from staying out of the county jail, the penitentiaries here. I have an idea I would like you guys to maybe kick around here. We have people sitting around all day watching TV, eating three squares a day, you know, leading a good life here. I would like to make a suggestion that we put some of these people in the Douglas County Jail to work. You know, I see the storm sewers in my neighborhood clogged up with leaves, sticks and whatnot. Could we not take some of these people? I saw it in the public polls yesterday, I believe it was, a gentleman said, Mark Douglas was his name, and we put these gentlemen in pink suits with a P on the back of the deal, and go out and do some things in our community, pick up trash and whatnot, you know, they could clean these storm sewers here if they need somebody to supervise them. I'm retired, I can supervise them, but there'll be, there'll be some ground rules laid down. We've got a job to do. You don't want to do it, take a hike here, we're out of here. But we're not taking full advantage of all the labor we have out here in our community. And I see Don and this other gentleman here, public defender, that's got to be a circus, a circus, because it's over and over and over and over again. We're not doing anything to discourage what's happening here with our young people. Does anybody have any questions to make? Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, you've been here several times, and I'm just saying this because my instinct as a chair says, "Say it." And I'm not worried about you, but to anybody in the public, say you want to talk with the commissioner, and don't say you're going to come looking for us, because then the sheriff may have to look for you. So that's just my, that's just my chair instinct. Not, nothing, you're not a threat, but I'm just saying, everybody knows you. So I'm just saying, as counsel for anybody, just say you want to talk to us, and then you're not going to come looking for any elected official. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I understood what you meant, and I've had some threats in my life, and others may have too, but I didn't, I was kind of startled when you said that, but I know what you mean. You're going to come back and raise hell about your evaluation, which is understandable. But let me just respond a little bit to what you brought up. The public defender and the county attorney are responding to our, the needs of our community. You know, I believe Mr. Klein has, and Mr. Riley as well, but certainly Mr. Klein probably has around thirty-five to maybe forty cases involving first degree, people charged with first degree murder. We have thirty or so, almost forty, in the Douglas County Correctional Facility. The governor has shifted to try to drive down the population of the penitentiary in Lincoln, has shifted, I believe through LB 605. Prisoners back home. That means they're coming here, which has put tremendous pressure and packed our jails. We can't, and because of a lot of reasons, we can't even accept any more immigration people, and we're also, there's some other difficulty. We're not making the revenue we were in the past because we were under construction, but also because of the prisoners that are being sent back here to relieve the state prisons. So we have that on your property tax bill as well, and that comes from Governor Ricketts. That's where that lands, okay, at his doorstep. The other thing is, we are, you heard the conversation go on here that was led by the people involved here, responding to difficulties in juvenile court with the methods of the operations and the demands on the lawyers, and ultimately hurts the children, is what I believe. So we're talking about trying to reform the system that will save money. We don't have a cattle call where you have fifteen lawyers standing in the room, all being paid, and only one progressing, the rest of them are not, and they're being called to their court, it's a disaster. And as to putting people to work, we have a contract with United Way that's very reasonable, I think it's about fifty thousand dollars a year, and we have, on any given day, about a hundred and ten nonprofits that accept individuals, some even who are involved in criminal cases, but mostly misdemeanors, who go to work for the nonprofit and serve out their sentence instead of going to jail. It's great because they keep their jobs, they're all this sort of thing, people don't go on welfare, so it is working. United Way does that, we have a contract with them. In addition to that, I'm not sure who's in charge of the cleaning crews now, it used to be the mayor's office, but maybe it's us, I've lost track of that, but we do have people out cleaning around, but there's a lot of places they could clean up better. But there are those crews out there, those working crews, and you see them with, there's someone supervising them as they clean up around town.
Michael, that's commendable. I'm so happy to hear that.
We're doing those things. Well, we are doing what, it's a good idea, and we're doing what, and they're, you know, that's the way they want to work off their sentence, so. But we are trying to do that thing, and also, the only thing I can say is that, you know, we have a good team operating here, and we've got very qualified people, are extremely fortunate, extremely fortunate to have the kind of talent we do in the prosecutor's office with Mr. Klein and in the public defender's office of Mr. Riley. We are absolutely blessed to have those people running those offices with their philosophy.
Well, if you gentlemen and ladies need any help, there's a lot of resources out here from retired people like myself that could maybe aid you guys in some of your problems.
We do, we do rely on you. We, you know, we listen to what you have to say, and we try to respond, so we, I know that, we appreciate your being here, we really do. It helps.
But you want to keep spending.
Well, there, we have to pay the bills. When people commit crimes, we can't let them go, they have to be prosecuted, they have to be defended, so that's the price of living in a society.
We could talk for hours about this.
We could.
Any more questions?
Commissioner Borges?
Not so much a question, but a comment that you bring up very good points, and there's more that's going on within the system and outside of the system, that I would love to have time and a cup of coffee with you to let you know all of those, because there are programs that we have and services that we have that are trying to keep individuals out of the system, and then we are, within our facilities, we're starting discharge planning the minute they come in the door to try to keep them from not coming back in. So I would love to sit down and talk to you more in depth about those programs and services.
Well, our society is only going to be as good as we all make it, working together.
That's right. That's right. Absolutely.
And the sooner we wake up and realize that, the better off we're going to be.
And I am a full believer that our retired folks have a lot to offer us as elected officials, but our system as a whole, so I would look forward to that conversation with you.
I'm going to say one more thing, then I'm going to sit down. I'm going to donate a dollar, a dollar here. That dollar is for my plastic bag that I'm going to use at the grocery store. We use plastic bags, okay?
Not our, yeah, that's the city, not our job.
I think we ought to charge a buck a bag. Now, you guys are all, have input to this.
No, we don't.
You know?
No, we don't. No, that's the city. Yeah, take your dollar back.
Come back at two o'clock.
Come back at two, yeah.
Well, where I'm going with this is, years ago, people took pride
That's right.
in their communities and their homes and whatnot. We have, for some reason, lost this over the last twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years or whatever. And it's really sad, because our young people are not learning the skills that they should be learning here.
Well, yes and no, and I know I don't want to drag this on, but here, I'm going to get on my soapbox for one more time, and that is, we have a lot of young people who are doing exceptional things in this county and in this state, but alls we hear about are the bad things. So if we could, for, I would say, a three to six month period, I would love to be proven wrong. I would guarantee you that if we would switch focus and start putting the good news out at the first ten minutes of the news, on the front page of the papers, you would see a change in attitude in people, because we, we are so drawn to this negative stuff because that's all we hear. I can't even watch the news at night, I can't sleep then, it's so awful the first ten minutes, because I know there are good things that are going on, but we don't hear about them. And I will guarantee you that if we did that, you would see a change in our young people's attitudes.
How do we, how do we make that happen?
Well, I'll, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay. You know, you guys all got your binkies here with you today?
The bones?
Your binkies. Binky, yes. You won the fifty thousand dollar deal. I see people driving down the road in their cars and whatnot, going like this, you know, they're not paying any attention to the driving.
Right.
They're in their binkies.
Right.
And it's really sad, you know. I could go on for an hour.
I know, we'll, we'll talk.
All right. Say again?
Some people wear caps inside in public, too.
Okay.
So Jim, you got any more budget-related items?
No, just watch the spending. You need some help, not cash, Ali, because
We'll be in touch.
you're stretching my funds.
Before you go, we know you, but can you state your name and?
Sure. Jim Sazama, S-A-Z-A-M-A.
Thank you.
Would you like anything else? Social Security number?
No, sir. Mike would, but that's a different deal.
I was joking.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Yeah, take your dollar.
Seeing, we got a request for a break, so board members can take care of some needs real quick. We're going to, it is twenty-seven, eleven twenty-seven, we're going to reconvene at eleven thirty-five. I'd say to the public, it's just one of those days, there's budgets and there's items, when we reconvene, we'll go to the JAGS budget, then we'll go into the presentations. So with that, we'll take a seven-minute break, and we will convene promptly at eleven thirty-five.
Can we get a motion in a second?
So move.
I guess that would be helpful with that. Please vote.
Hi.
All right. Vote for passes.
break, and we will convene promptly at eleven thirty-five.
Can we get a motion in a second?
So move.
I guess that would be helpful with that.
Please vote.
Hi.
All right. Motion passes.
Haha.
(laughing)
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 All right.
All right.
Motion passes.
(laughing)
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 The Juvenile Assessment Center provides screening and assessment services to all those youth and recommendations to the county attorney for further filing or processing decisions. The Douglas County Attorney's Office has the legal expertise to handle all of those matters and the responsibility to handle those matters, and the Juvenile Assessment Center has the human or youth service expertise to provide recommendations. Our collaborative efforts seek to divert as many youth as possible from those formal Our philosophies include decreasing the likelihood of further offending or more serious offending by addressing situations of juvenile delinquency early on in the process. We use validated risk assessment instruments in order to take bias out of the process. Our assessment results allow us to provide consistent and equitable response, which is a key element of the juvenile justice system reform efforts. Research shows us that too little or too much intervention in a youth's life is harmful. So we rely on matching the risks, needs with interventions, and we use our risk assessment instruments in our screening and assessment process to do that. And our assessment processes developed to meet youth needs are guided by evidence-based, specialized training, and research. This is an absolute 1,000-foot view of the kids that we see at the Juvenile Assessment Center. Just a brief snapshot today. Youth referred in the calendar year 2017 for legal violations, 1,309. On truancy referrals, the Juvenile Assessment Center and the County Attorney's Office have a collaborative effort to see every single truancy referral and process those truancy referrals to determine if they are eligible for a diversionary process. There were 1,400, as you can see. Dually-involved youth, many of you know, are youth who are already involved in the child welfare system and then do become involved in the delinquency system. And then status requests are requests coming directly to the county attorney's office from parents requesting court intervention for their children. Final diversion numbers from court processing for 2017 include 887 diversions and warning letters for those youth, 167 truancy youth who did not progress to court processing, and then 112 of the duly-involved or crossover youth and status requests for youth did not go to court. That does not mean the rest of the youth did. Those who were processed for either or, those were, did not end up going to court. There are countless details I can provide you for each one of these kids to include how it was they came to the process of coming involved with the legal system, what their risks and needs are, what things helped those youth, what challenges those youth and families face. And I'll be glad to provide any of those kind of details at a more appropriate and lengthier time. Today, I would just like to summarize that. The benefits of the JAC do include positive opportunities for all youth coming to the attention of the county attorney's office who may be assessed to get on a healthier life path. We provide evidence-based recommendations for diversion decisions. We do provide cost savings to the system, and I would be glad to go into that deeper as well. We assist to ensure that court resources can be used appropriately for those youth who need a higher level of supervision and who are at a higher risk to reoffend. We provide information to the community to bolster community prevention efforts to help children not enter the system. We participate in and provide information to improve our juvenile justice system at all levels. And finally, the quality service that we do provide to the youth that come to the attention of the Juvenile Assessment Center really does exhibit to young people, their families, and the community the values of this county in serving the citizens, both young and families. So with that, I would take any questions?
You talked about the community-based, let's see, the Community-Based Aid Community Team, Operation Youth Success Steering Committee. There was a decision to accept the county board-appointed recommendation to cut grant funding for the JAC. Why was that recommendation made, if you know, and what happened? What programs were ceased, or is there duplication? What about it?
I'll explain that. Commissioner Boyle, there was a recommendation brought to make a tweak to the way that the funds were done, so the group agreed that the commissioners would appoint one person to sit on this screening committee. The committee recommended cuts not only to the JAC but to home. And not so much cuts to performance, but the rationale was that the committee had been trying for years to put more money into the community, and the recommendation was that the county should split half of it to put more in. And I had a conversation with everybody here, kind of saying, this is where it was, and was there anybody at angst with it? Because if so, then we needed to make the case in that room for it. So people were fine with it going forward, so...
Yeah, I'm just asking, was there some programs that you were doing that you no longer do? I'm trying to get at why your budget's going up if you had these... I know the grant funding was cut, but you were doing... What were you doing with the grant funds?
Our budget is only going up due to the...
Funds being cut.
Right, and those cover personnel costs, mainly personnel costs. We aren't changing our services.
Okay, well, where did those funds go? Are they just gone, or anybody else getting them?
They haven't went yet because the budget is for '19, so...
Okay, but I'm trying to drive at, are those funds going to go to some other group?
Yes.
Okay, well, are they going to do the same things you're doing? Is this duplication? That's the bottom line.
No.
No, it isn't, Commissioner.
Okay, what are you doing that they're not doing?
We're assessing youth who are coming to the attention of the Douglas County Attorney's Office.
Right.
The programs who are receiving the funds are things like the Police Athletic League, who are offering baseball and soccer in the community, Refugee Advocate Services. I do a disservice to try and name all of the different...
So that's where the money is going to go?
To the prevention end.
And what are they doing? Are they not doing the same thing that you are?
No, they're not.
Commissioner Boyle, I wouldn't make a hard correlation to say it, because money was taken from them and went there. I think the money was given to the plan from two services in the plan that the county submitted. So some of the places that got funded were there, other services got funded in regards to alternatives to detention to keep them out. If you want the list, what we can do is provide...
No, I'm just looking for duplication.
There's no duplication.
Okay, well, I don't understand what the... I mean, if they're playing soccer and things, it's kind of odd, because I've sat on a South Omaha grant meeting, we gave them money. I mean, they're getting money... Pace you're talking about? I mean, they're getting money from a lot of sources and foundations. So anyway, I just, I don't get that, I guess. Let me go to page five, where you talk about assessment processes developed to meet youth needs. You talk about law violations, truancy referrals, duly-involved, and status requests. Is there any place in here that trauma enters the picture, young people that are... Where is it on here?
It isn't listed on here. That would be one of the points I would like to make when I have a more detailed presentation for you. Trauma actually is a part of all of our assessments. Every one of our staff, to include our administrative staff, are trained in trauma-informed care, and we're doing those trainings at least twice a year.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Borgson.
Sean, did you take a look at your budget and provide, Joe, or I guess I'm going to ask you if you have it, what your budget would look like if you don't get this funding? And just so the board is aware, there is a committee right now taking a look at the JAC to see whether or not what they are providing should stay the same, or should it look different, and what would it be, and all of that. So that's being looked at as we speak. But did you take a look and did you try? Because I think that that's what we need to see, is if you didn't have this money, what would your budget look like? What would the services look like? I mean, to me, we took a jump a few years ago with expanding this JAC without any real, in my opinion, real thorough conversation and look at whether or not that's what we should do. And now we've created this JAC, and I'm not saying what we're doing is all wrong yet. I'm just saying that we need to now take that deep dive to see if what we're doing is really what we should be doing. And especially since now, and Commissioner Rogers and I have had this conversation, especially now because we're going to be looking at general fund dollars, tax dollars, to be funding the JAC. And I think that that's the right thing to do, is to look at this, because I was one that kept pushing that LB-561 dollars, Community-Based Aid Dollars, should be getting out to the community, not funding governmental services. And so I'm okay with all of that, but what I need you to do is tell me what it would look like if you don't get these dollars. It's easy to come up and say, I need it because everything stays the same, this is what we do, but what is the other side of that? What's the flip side of that? And we need to know that.
Can I go into that a little bit here, Commissioner? Is there...
If you don't... I mean, if you did it, I don't have any documentation that shows you did it.
I didn't provide the documentation that it would be seven of the 13 staff would be cut, because that money is almost all personnel cost, so that would mean seven staff cut. And I could go into just a little bit of the history of the JAC personnel. In 2003, when the JAC opened, there were nine staff. In 2006, we added our first bilingual specialist.
And what year was that?
2006.
Six.
In 2013, we added another position, an assessment specialist, to meet the increased needs of youth being referred. That brought us to 11. And then in 2014, we increased two positions to meet the needs of, again, legal changes. So over the course of time, there were both legal changes in the way juveniles were processed and the truancy law, as well as an increased partnership with the Douglas County Attorney's Office, sending youth to be assessed who would formerly have been filed directly in court. So for instance, felonies used to be filed directly in court, and over the course of time, now felonies will come to the Juvenile Assessment Center for an opportunity to be diverted from the court process. So both of those things have been going along over the last several years, and increase to try and divert more youth brought on those more staff positions. So we've been at 13 staff since 2014.
Well, and I guess I'll get on my soapbox a little bit on this one, too, because prior to us doing this, and again, it was all triggered because of the truancy stuff to begin with, but prior to this, our youth didn't even enter the system, meaning entering into JAC. County attorney went to a provider, asked the provider to take these children. Those children were decided whether or not they should go there by the county attorney, and they went there. And the system worked, and that program was successful, it still is today, but with not getting referrals from us. And so now, we've changed to where, and this is where I have a little bit of an angst, is that our OYS and our reform is to keep children out of the system, and we are now pulling, putting all of our children into the system to go through these screenings and services that the JAC provides. And in some cases, I think it's unnecessary. And again, philosophy difference, okay, fine, but again, I think that's where we need to really take a look at whether or not what we're doing, do we continue to do it the way we've done it? Especially when there's been great success from providers in the community that are able to handle these children. So I guess I think, I would ask you to, again, whatever you just rattled off there to give us, in what it would look like if we did not have those cuts, and how that would affect what the benefits are of the JAC, what the JAC provides, how we do it, that's what I want to know.
I can forward that to you. And Commissioner, thank you for mentioning the evaluation that the JAC is undergoing right now. It's a two-year process, and I appreciate your participation on that. It's a pretty intense process of stakeholders, and Commissioner Borgson is a part of that stakeholders group, and really examining the purpose of the JAC and what should that function be moving forward.
Right.
Commissioner Craft.
Yeah, my fear is that if we don't fund you, will there be even a temporary spike in the number of juveniles being incarcerated?
I would have to defer that to the county attorney.
Okay.
Would that be...
She's here, please go.
Sure, yeah, if you can answer that.
If they didn't have the personnel to appropriately manage and assess the cases that the county attorney's office is referring to them, that could potentially, if there's not a diversion opportunity, lead to filing if juveniles are in front of the court.
So we'd be increasing the cost of incarceration and the trauma of incarceration?
Potentially.
Potentially, yes.
Case by case, depending on the evidence presented to the judge on that case, it could potentially be...
That's what I assumed, I just wanted confirmation. Thank you.
Okay, Sean, you have no other questions. Are there anybody else wanting to comment on the budget?
All right, good morning. My name is Juliette Summers. I live at 216 South 86th Street, Omaha, 68114, and I am here today to speak in support of the Juvenile Assessment Center's budgetary request. When a young person gets into trouble, we need to respond carefully to ensure that he or she's held accountable in developmentally appropriate ways that are going to promote community safety, while also sending the youth on a path to successful adulthood. And unfortunately, I don't need to say this to the board, clearly you have a lot of information and expertise in this, but the involvement in the formal juvenile justice system, the court process, often unnecessarily drives low-risk youth deeper into the system and increases their chances of reoffending, increases the likelihood of the trauma of incarceration. Diversion programs like the JAC allow youth who have committed crimes or status offenses to take responsibility for their actions, engage in rehabilitative services, and make reparations to the community without the expense and delay of court involvement. I have a copy of my written testimony that I can distribute, so you have some of the data that I can offer to you. I do want to say that I'm here particularly today because I was actually a member of that grant advisory team appointed by Commissioner Kavanaugh, I was, that recommended moving the budget for the JAC out of that community-based juvenile services aid fund and into, our recommendation would be for it to come into the county general fund. And I do not speak for other members of that group, I speak for myself here today, but I also would echo the sentiments of a letter that we submitted at that time to the Operation Youth Success Steering Committee and also to the board about that recommendation, explaining that recommendation. And sort of the reasons were twofold. So first, that that fund, that state fund, the hope and the intention was for that money to go to really early prevention. So as Commissioner Borgson was discussing, to get that money out into the community where it can be true, early, early, early preventive efforts to get kids into positive pro-social engagement, to prevent criminal offending in the first place, I think as the gentleman earlier today was thinking about as well. So that money, the advisory committee really wanted to fund, to use that funds with the initial intent, the early prevention, what's going to keep kids out of the system at all in the first place, from coming to the attention of the county attorney, from committing crimes, and then also for alternatives to detention, you know, once, if they have reached that point, to keep them safely in their home and community. So that was one big rationale for that recommendation. And the other was that a true philosophical belief that a juvenile diversion program is a necessary and important part, a function of local government, and as such, it really should be reliably funded through the budgetary process, rather than having to apply year after year to a state grant fund that could disappear at the legislature's whim, you know. I also, through my day job, I do some advocacy at the state legislature on juvenile issues. And I know that, you know, we're in a budgetary hole at the state level as well, and every year, we're a little worried that this fund that's meant to keep kids out of detention, out of the deeper end, could disappear. So, oh, I didn't start my time. I don't know how long I've been talking at you.
As long as, you know, you're reasonable.
Okay, so I do want to say that it's really important to bear in mind here that there's a huge cost savings in addition to the community benefit that diversion offers. So the Juvenile Justice Institute at UNO recently published a report on Nebraska's diversion programs, highlighting the link between successful completion of diversion and decreased recidivism rates. JJI tracked young people across three years to determine whether they engaged in further criminal conduct after being referred to diversion programming. And they found that between 2012 and 2015, the Douglas County Juvenile Assessment Center had a 78% rate of successful completion of their diversion program. And of those 78%, nearly 70% did not have any law violations two to three years after completing the program. So there is a strong link between successful completion of diversion in Douglas County and lack of recidivism two to three years later. That's a really great statistic. I'm not here to tell you that diversion or the JAC is a panacea, but whether or not you attribute that rate of success to the JAC's programming, or to the fact that maybe those are the low-risk youth anyway, the dollars and sense of it is this, that through the JAC, our county attorney is able to refer appropriate youth to be held accountable outside of the formal court process, which we just heard plenty of testimony about is messy and complicated and expensive. And as a result, our county saves money, and our families, our youth and our families are saved the stress and the time of unnecessary court involvement. UNO has described cost savings of diversion by this way. So they said that while each court appearance costs $300 to $400 per court appearance, a youth served through a juvenile diversion program costs only a few dollars a day. I know that UNO has done a more in-depth assessment of the cost of court involvement, and they're very conservative number of a total from start to finish, once you've come to court. I think it's 1465.
1475.
1475. And that is extremely conservative, very low end of what the cost of one court case is from start to finish. And so if you compare that, you know, the 2017 numbers of the successful completions at the JAC, those are kids who are going away, who we know from the research are unlikely to recidivate two to three years into the future, at least, and compare that with the cost of, at a minimum, the estimate of costing almost $1,500 to go through the court process, it really reflects substantial savings and a cost-effective way of doing this business. And most importantly, that estimate doesn't even account for longer-term savings the county experiences through reduced recidivism. So savings to the cost of individual victims of crimes that won't occur, savings on the costs of arrests, the cost of incarceration, the cost of future court involvement. So I've talked at you long enough, I'd be happy, as I said, to distribute this, to answer any questions you may have about my perspective on the work of that grant advisory committee. And I just, I guess, want to close by saying, particularly this year, I think it is really important to do that evaluation and look at how the JAC is functioning and maybe ways that even fewer kids could be involved in that formal start of the process. But I would love to see the opportunity for that money that this grant advisory committee recommended flow out into the community, to have the opportunity to see that money start to do its work in the community, to get that prevention so that fewer numbers start even coming to the JAC before, you know, their staff would be cut, or they would stop doing their work. Because my worry would be those cuts would result in more kids going into the court system. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, if I could, I'd like to ask Commissioner Borgson a question, because I think she knows the answer to this, then I can... What does the state contribute to the JAC program? So what I'd like to say to you is a very...
Community-based aid, they contribute something.
What do they contribute?
The state money that we administer.
What financially do you contribute?
Currently, in the current budget fiscal year, my things got moved, sorry. This is yours, too, sorry about that. Currently this year, we're receiving $487,674 grant dollars from our state legislative process.
What's the source of the grant money, do you know?
General fund, state money.
I'm sorry?
General fund money from the state.
General fund money from the state?
Yeah.
And so that goes toward your operations?
That covers those seven personnel I mentioned earlier.
I'm sorry, what's that?
That covers those personnel I mentioned earlier, the seven personnel, as well as our assessment instrument itself, the drug testing, postage...
Commissioner Boyle, if I can clarify, that's the money we're talking about cutting. It's community-based aid funds, which are issued by the crime commission. It's money that is allocated by the state in the legislative process. Crime commission receives applications from jurisdictions, issues the money. So that money that she's talking about is the money that is on the table today.
Okay, well, who's cutting that? We are?
Well, that's the proposal to the end.
Why would we cut funds from the state? We don't get anything from them, I'm surprised.
Let me clarify. You want to be technical, the money comes from the state to the crime commission, the crime commission gives it to the county, the county administers it. We, it was a recommendation from the, and because of that money, the board doesn't control that money, because the crime commission rules.
Which board, this board?
This board. The board just agrees to accept it. Because the crime commission rules, each county must submit a plan, and they must put together an advisory group made up of prescriptive members.
Right.
That prescriptive body for us is the Omaha Youth Success Group. There used to be a subsection of that group that reviewed the grant and recommended it. This year, the board decided to appoint, each person had a rep. Commissioner Kavanaugh's rep. And each person had a rep, and that board initially did the vet and made the recommendations to the OYS Steering Committee. That's the money that they recommended cut. And what they asked the board to do was to put more skin in the game on it, really much to take it out of soft money, meaning grant money. So this is a conversation I had with the board before it happened, because I told them, this is the ramification, do we want to absorb this? Because if not, we need to make the case. Everybody I talked to was fine, I made sure I talked to everybody.
Oh, I'm not fine with it.
Okay, you were fine then.
No, I wasn't.
Okay, I'm gonna tell you, I talked, and because the fact was that when I was part of that initial vet group, they wanted to make those cuts, and I said, no, no, the board needs to sign off on that because of where it happened. So the, what she's saying is, right now, they're technically in '18. '19 starts July 1 of this year, no, '18 starts July 1 of this year. That is the money that will fund them next year. And right now, they're only funded to go to December. All of that was personnel. And so that's the history of it.
Commissioner, may I, because I think...
Can I answer your question?
Come on.
Well, I just want to answer, because here's where I have the beef, is that these are dollars that are coming from LB-561, which are the Community-Based Aid Dollars. I look at that completely different than what the question was, is are there state dollars funding the JAC?
Right.
I say no, because this is a grant process, these Community-Based Aid Dollars. And so when we have had this discussion at Operation Youth Success as to moving those grant dollars more out into the... grant dollars more out into the community, which then triggered the conversation as to if those go away from county departments and operations, then this board has to decide if we are going to use general fund tax dollars to fund them. So when Commissioner Rogers was going around and saying, this is what the discussion was, the discussion, from me anyway, was yes, I understand that, and I can't say I'm 100% on board, because I think we need to look at the Jack. You can't just say that because one pot of money is going away, do we just continue to do what we're doing?
Yeah.
So we need to take a look at that and say, do we continue to fund the Jack in the way that we have funded it before? So it's still, it's our dollars now, it's property tax dollars, that are going to be funding it versus the grant dollars through the community-based aid.
Well, where's the grant money going, if it's not going to this?
There's a whole list, and we'll have that sent back out. There's a whole list that the community-based aid review team, where we appointed each person, they looked at all of the applications that came in from providers all over the county. And they decided where those should go. And then, and it tells you how much is getting this, how much is getting that. So we'll send that out to you as to where that money is going.
Okay, is it going to be used for similar services, or do you know?
No, there's all different kinds of services, a lot geared towards prevention, some towards diversion, some towards aftercare. So it's a lot of different things, not specific to providing what they're necessarily providing, but providing services that our youth need in the community.
So that our youth need more in the community than what they're providing?
Only those dollars.
Well, that's what I mean. We're giving everybody half a million dollars, giving it to somebody else, so it must, the only reason you do that, I would think, and the rationale, is that we're getting more bang for our buck with the other people than we are with the Jack?
No. The emphasis was, is that when the community-based aid dollar law was passed and those dollars came down, those dollars were supposed to go out to community providers. If you look historically at our dollars, there was a small amount of the dollars going to the community. Instead, they were being used to fund the Jack, the county attorney, probation, Operation Youth Success, internal stuff. So we said, timeout, these dollars, and the reason that these dollars came was so that we gave it to the community. Not necessarily has anything to do with the Jack necessarily, but that it was, those dollars were being used to fund the Jack. So the question was, that's not really a community service. These dollars were supposed to go to community providers that are providing services for our youth. So that our services, county services, that's where our question and our debate has to go, is so do we use general fund dollars to make up that difference, or do we not? Is basically what the question is.
Okay, well, I guess if I look at page four, it looks to me like they're doing things that should be funded. And also page five, but I, so I already see this, I mean, the state is, in spite of what's being said, is flush with money. When they're cutting, when Governor Ricketts is cutting income taxes for the wealthy and for corporations, you know, the kids that were involved in that shooting in Florida used a phrase, and I would like to use it here, but I'm not going to, because there may be some children watching. It begins with B and the second word is S. So anyway, I just, I don't really see a lot of, I just don't see the distinction between this. I think they're providing a service that I don't understand.
I'll show you the...
Draw me some pictures, will you?
Yeah, I will.
Thanks.
May I also say?
Sure.
Commissioner, I think maybe you weren't present during my, part of my testimony. I was talking about that decision from, or that recommendation from this grant advisory committee. And I think the hope is, I really appreciate what Sean and the Jacks do, but I think the hope is that we can reach a day when fewer kids are being referred to in the first place. And that that, so rather than cutting state money from Douglas County, this is a different way of investing that state money to do that prevention work, to keep kids from the front door of the system in the first place.
That's a nice thing, except that we're being asked to make up the money from property tax dollars.
At least for now.
Well, not at least for now. I mean, it's a big deal, because, you know, when we lose grant funds, and we do it to ourselves, that's just really unusual. But when we lose grant money, I mean, that happens all the time with sheriffs, deputies, with Omaha police officers, all sorts of people. It's a great deal, we're going to have all this grant money by, you know, some benevolent person, and then bang, it's gone. And so we have to pick up millions, and the only way we do that is through property taxes. And I'm not a big fan of that at all. So, I mean, to me, this is going to be, end up, for my money, a cut for Jack. And I don't like to do it, because I think they're doing good things. But if you have to sort it out, that's what this leads to. And of course, the state's contributed to this tremendously, by cutting taxes. There's no, this is like Kansas. Take a look at Kansas. And, you know, during the Reagan years, I was there, 22% interest. I know what this all triggers. Trickle-down is not trickle-down, it's money up. That's what happens. They just get more money and put it in their pocket. Awful.
So Commissioner Boyle, just let me add, I'll be happy to sit down with you, too, but let me just, I don't, I want to be fair. I'm fine with hitting the state, but I want to be fair with the hit, is that this is not totally that on this deal. And I think the, like I said, when I update everybody on what it is, the history of that fund, and I'm just, I'll say this and I'll end it, is that originally, it started as a $400,000 pot from the state, that we use specifically, all of it, to fund the Jack and the home program. And as that fund grew recently, over the last three to four years, it grew to 1.8 million. And other obligations came in, and other things came. So this is, you know, I agree with you, those actions the state has taken, but it's not a direct argument for trickle-down and other stuff like that. You know, personally, I, you know, I've been saying for years, they need to be all soft money. And it's unfair to make the case to the public, because the public needs to hear where it is. But the, what this specific act that they're doing for us is the staff piece, because there's other money in there that comes from the state that they use to pay for kids that can't afford the services, the assessment and other stuff that comes with it. So your question is fair, I just want to make sure, when you take a shot at the state, I want to join in, this may not be exactly a fair shot.
Oh, Commissioner Rogers, the reason I responded that way was that Ms. Roberts, or excuse me, Ms. Summers, made a comment about the state cutting funding, and they're in a real budget crunch and everything else. Well, they're not in a budget crunch if they're giving away money to millionaires and to corporations. That's my point. This is more of the same thing those kids talked about. It's BS, is what it is.
Fair.
And they're, you know, they're creating a crisis so they can give money. I think the reason these programs, these grants are all cut is because they don't make campaign contributions.
I'll leave it at that. Anything else you want to add?
No.
I don't see any comments from the board.
Thank you for your time.
Any, okay, no, we're open now. Anybody else want to comment on this item? Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Kagan again, Nebraska taxpayers. I have three questions for the Jack people. First one is, do you have available the tracking mechanism to note what percentage of the kids successfully complete the department programs that's available to the public?
Yes, I do, sir.
Okay, and can we get a copy of that?
We can provide that, yes.
Okay. Secondly, we've been talking about grants here. Is there any way you could apply for, I know various county departments apply for their own grants. Is there any way you could accelerate your grant search to get grant money to substitute for the grant money that was taken away?
Currently, there are...
You're close to the mic, you can't get picked up.
Is this one on?
That's on.
Okay. We actually have, in the past, had several grant sources, and all of those have gone away over time. So most of those were federal sources. This community-based aid is the only state source, and we're currently receiving private sources to cover that evaluation process, so that that doesn't come out of our budget.
Okay. And secondly, do you still offer services for non-English speakers?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and so you, do you hire your own interpreters? Or do you have staff that are bilingual?
We have four staff that are bilingual.
Okay. And those are, that they just do bilingual work, or other work also?
Both. They see clients who speak Spanish and clients who speak English. And for all of the youth that we serve who speak other languages, or whose families speak other languages, part of the community-based dollars go to an organization to provide interpreters and cultural ambassadors to help those families through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Still Jim Sazma, 9161 Charles, we're running from the county yet, like I told you.
I'm still here.
My question is, ma'am, it looks like you're providing a pretty good service here, but has anybody ever looked at the, what's causing these young people to get in these situations from the get-go? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Part of our, part of the work of the Jack has always been looking at causation, and how that we can help the community, and specifically schools, because that's where our youth are spending the majority of their time, helping to prevent them from becoming arrested, part of the system reform efforts. When Commissioner Rogers and others mention Operation Youth Success, we sit on almost all of those committees and take part in those committees, trying to bolster prevention efforts, so that, so that kids don't become involved in the legal system.
I'm going to follow up with a question here. You know, we have a lot of young people in our society out here that do good things. What are we doing for these kids, young kids, in the area of good things? I was in Boy Scouts, I was lucky to make the rank of Eagle Scout, and we had a lot of people in Boy Scouts. Maybe what we ought to do is encourage some of our people to get in these organizations, like the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, whatnot, give them more time to do those kinds of things, and less time to get into trouble. Do we do anything in that arena?
We do, we do. I appreciate that question. It's an excellent question. Part of, when we are meeting with youth and families, we're identifying, are they involved in any positive activities? And if they are not involved, we do try and help them get involved in positive activities. That is a key to youth being successful in the community.
Yes, I've had the opportunity to attend some of the meetings, not the Learning Center, and I was not very impressed with what the Learning Center is doing for our young people today. What do you have to do with the Learning Center?
Sir, we're not involved with the Learning Center.
You're not?
No.
So you're over and above that, then?
I don't know the connection. I...
You're not familiar with the Learning Center?
I will have to learn about that.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Saying none, thank you, Sean.
Thank you for your time, Commissioner.
We'll now go into presentations and IMA, are cash behind bells unconstitutional? Commissioner Craft, you want to intro this?
This is an acquaintance of mine, David Herzog. He's pretty well-known throughout the community. David's been an attorney, I'm going to let you do a little bit of a bio of yourself, if you would please, but he's going to talk about cash bells and how, well, he will explain it much better than I ever could. So, David?
My name is David Herzog. I've been a lawyer since 1962. And these days, it sounds like 1862. I'm a former deputy county attorney. Don Klein talked about his boss, Pinky Knowles. I worked for Pinky Knowles, one of the greatest trial lawyers I've ever experienced. I am a founding member of the Nebraska Criminal Defense Attorneys Association, and I am here because I read the law morning, noon, at night, and even in the restroom. And I came across a series of federal court cases where the cash bail bond system is being attacked as unconstitutional. So what the hell am I talking about? What I'm talking about is that the Constitution of the United States and the state of Nebraska provides for bail. Bail is a cash deposit that arrestees pay to obtain their freedom. There are some arrestees who are released on their own recognizance, very few, some have to deposit monies to obtain their freedom. The constitutional attack is under the equal protection clause of the federal constitution and our state constitution, which means that a wealthy person, a person with monies, can buy their freedom before trial, but a poor person sits in jail. What knocked my socks off this morning was that there was a quote about the prison population, that there are 900, there are 900 citizens sitting at 710 South 17th Street, waiting for their days in court, because they aren't admitted to bail. Now, some of those people should not be admitted to bail. What I am here to advocate is a letter that I sent to Commissioner Craft detailing what has occurred in federal court, particularly in Houston and in Colorado, and I think in other districts, where the bail bond system that is based on cash has been declared unconstitutional. So what's the remedy? The remedy is the federal system. The federal system does not allow for cash bail. Either the judicial magistrate deciding whether or not the person is to be released or kept in confinement decides on the basis of harm to the community, harm to the person, harm to the citizen. So it's a go or no-go system. Money is out. The problem is, is that there's a political dimension to this. In Douglas County, if I have a bail that is $1,000, that's 10% of $10,000. Guess who keeps 10% of the 10%? You do. So there is a process by which you may be financially shooting yourself in the foot if you go for the federal system. I think Commissioner Craft has circulated a copy of my letter detailing the federal litigation. But I'm not here to tell you that you're going to get sued by David L. Herzog. No, I'm not going to do it, because this is state legislation. That's the only forum that's going to cure the problem. What I'm suggesting that the county board of Douglas County do is to support the revision of our bail bond statute, so that it more approximates the federal system, which is more humane. What's the big deal about the 900 people that are sitting in jail? That reduces your costs. Hello, it reduces your costs. Should I say that the third time? It reduces... I recommend that this board go on record to support the adoption of the federal system. I sent Commissioner Craft a copy of the federal rules that detail how the go/no-go system works. Part of the no-go system, or the go system, when a person is released, they're released to pre-trip officers, who are like probation officers, and they're monitored, so that they're employed, so they behave, so that their activities ensure that they appear for future court proceedings. One of the things I was just alarmed with, and I'm going to go off script here, I'm going to suggest that you members of the county board read a book published by and authored by Dr. John DiUlio, D-I, capital, L-U-L-I-O, Jr. He wrote a book, I think he's a Princeton criminologist, and his thesis was The Youth Predator. This is a child who has no connection except the TV, to video games, Spurn School, religion means nothing, the morals of the Stop and Go Lights, John DiUlio, The Youth Predator, a very highly controversial publication. But what you're doing here is you're reacting to the crime... means nothing, the morals of the Stop and Go Lights, John Diulio, The Youth Predator, a very highly controversial publication. But what you're doing here is you're reacting to the crime, to the delinquency, and the difficulties that are costing us taxpayers an arm and a leg. John Diulio has a theory as to why they're getting into the systems in the first place. Abenicio, from the starts. Jim likes that. So does Mike. I learned something in law school. Anyhow, Dr. Fox, Foxall, has been also given a copy of the federal rules and regulations to steer us away from the cash bail bond system, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. You can't do it, because this requires state, state legislation to cure. There was a recent amendment to our bail bond statute where a judge has to decide whether or not the detainee or the, or the accused has the ability to pay for a bail, has the ability to pay for it. That just flies by like smoke. It has no moment. Let me give you a little example of where I come from. When I worked for Pinky Knowles, Donald Knowles, a blessed memory, my office had six lawyers in it. Of course, the city stopped at 72nd Street. Now, Don Klein and the Public Defender have over 50 lawyers in their office, 50. Why? It's a function of population. It's how large we have become. We're no longer, what's that cartoon in The New Yorker, about a New Yorker's view of the United States? It starts at Statue of Liberty, Philadelphia, Chicago, Las Vegas, and Hawaiian Islands. But we're just somewhere down there. Well, we're no longer down there. This is a wonderful town. I love it. I've been practicing law here for a long time, and I would continue to do so. My recommendation is, look at the letter I sent to Commissioner Craft detailing the vulnerability of our cash bail bonds. Any questions?
Sir, you have, you have a slew of fans. You're gonna start with Commissioner Craft?
And I've shared, I'm, I'm not sure if you sent me three or four letters plus that other one, but I've shared every one of them with all of the commissioners. The last one I shared in a paper copy instead of a digital copy. And I think, to a man, we may agree with you, because at $93 a day for incarceration, 900 people being incarcerated pre-adjudication or pre-trial, that's about $83,000, $84,000 a day.
A day.
That is a lot of our tax dollars. So if we could cut that in half by monitoring in other ways, I think we could cut it way more than half, but let's just look at that and, and go with what we can. And for the public's information, David is one of the brightest people I've ever met. I, I'm not saying that. He, he has a memory that is fantastic. He's represented many people in defense, and one of the people I admire most in the law profession.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna let questions go from other commissioners.
Mr. Herzog, I said that tongue-in-cheek, a slew of fans. What I meant is, you got a slew, you have a slew of interest here? So lined up, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Borgson.
David, I, I, first of all, your, your letters are very thoughtful, and I read each one of them several times.
Thank you.
And really, they're very, very, they're just incredible, very well-written. Doesn't surprise me, but they're very well-written. And I do want to acknowledge the other half of the family, Julie Dunn, who just came in the back too, who's also a practicing notorious lawyer, and she's monitoring what you're saying, David, and all that goes. I, I, I want to ask, you know, the purpose of bail-
You can't get by with anything, can you?
No. The purpose of bail, to me, is supposed to be to avoid a flight risk, you know, it's that some kind of a reasonable bail. And you look back, I don't mean to bring up a lot of pain, but you look at the incident where the woman was killed on Q Street by someone who was not a citizen, and the judge followed what at the time was procedure, but you just saw another case a couple of weeks ago where the bail was set at $2 million. So, and the fellow, the one that was several months ago, well, maybe a year and a half ago now, who killed the young lady, he left the country and no one could find him.
Right.
So when you say that the federal system is released, you know, how would that prevent someone who is of a mind to flee, particularly when they're not a citizen? How does this, how does that fit, what happens?
Well, the first example you're talking about is a monumental screw-up, because there was a police officer in that homicide case that called the INS three times to find out what-
Status.
That immigration status was, and if the INS had entered the telephone, that fellow would never have done what he did.
Right.
So the point is, is that the scrutiny that a detainee potentially would go through to determine if he's a go-keep or no-keep is exactly what you'd, it would ferret out exactly that. These million-dollar bails and bonds, that's like asking a citizen to pay the national debt.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, now, the problem is, is that under Nebraska law, for the purpose, because of the presumption of innocence, every citizen has the presumption of innocence. If a person came before a judge, under that presumption, everybody would go. But our Supreme Court has ruled that a citizen charged may be regarded by a judge as having committed that offense for the purpose of setting conditions of release. Now, that's the Eighth Amendment to the United States Constitution, reflected in our Nebraska Constitution, and that's the way it's been. But most recently, because of the attack on the cash system, which penalizes persons who are poor and impoverished, penalizes them, whereas the person with funds can buy their liberty. That's the point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Counselor, it's a pleasure to have you here today. I've-
I love you too, and I'll vote for you.
Thank you. I, I've had a, a great education listening to you. I've peered simultaneously with you in court many times and learned a lot. I served on the Criminal Defense Attorneys Board with you for years, and I learned a lot there as well. You make a cogent point, and that is, that as Commissioner Boyle indicated, the point of bond is to make sure you show up in court. That's it. Not to punish you-
Good behavior also.
Yeah, but, but it's not a punitive matter.
Not supposed to be, but it is.
And we are unfortunately in a situation where the numbers that, that you and Commissioner Craft indicated relative to if we have 900 people at 90 bucks a night, $84,000, that adds up real quick. And so, you know, it's not only just that we follow the law, but it's also good economics that we follow the law. Your letters are cogent and, and, and well-written from a legal point of view, they make complete sense. I'm also taken by your comment that, as commissioners, we don't have a lot of control over, over this.
Correct.
But we're not the only people listening to you talk here today. And so, as an active citizen in our community, you're in the public forum now, you're in the agora, and hopefully the public is watching and, and listening, and, and we welcome that type of civic engagement. Finally, I must add that you are an occasional churchgoer at our parish, and your wife invariably has the best Easter bonnet of, of anybody there, so Julie, welcome again.
Well, she always finds a pew in the church that doesn't have a kneeler, because I'm not Catholic, I'm Jewish. She's Catholic, and so she finds me the appropriate position.
Very ecumenical. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
It's a great parish.
Thanks for, for your contribution.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. This makes too much sense to ever happen. What, what you say makes eminent sense and, and would be such a positive step forward for not just Douglas County, but if it impacts us, it's gonna impact every county in the state. The, the, the cost savings and the effectiveness of, of what you suggest are almost unfathomable. But the quickest way to make enemies is to try to change something. This is too drastic of a change, I think, for us to ever see in our lifetime, but man, I love it. I love what you are saying, and I would be thrilled if this board could somehow try to make that happen.
It's gonna require legislation. I have sent a similar address to our Douglas County State Representatives in our one-horse opera, the Unicameral, and hopefully they too will see the wisdom, because it does impact you. It does impact Douglas County taxpayers. And make no mistake, the system that the feds use also requires staff. So I may give you a great idea on the one hand, but there's a cost factor on the other hand you have to be, beware of. And then there's the political process of the 10%, from the 10%, which Jim knows about, that makes, and Mike knows about, that may be something that has to be coped with. But I'm grateful for the reception, and thank you, John Diulio, Jr. If you all don't read it, you're gonna miss a wonderful opportunity to learn why we're getting the juvenile court case loads, why we're getting the craziness that goes on in county court. You know, the county court last year handed 200,000 pieces of business? 200,000, and I have to wait in that courtroom. You know who was missing at this rostrum? Here's the legislative side of constitutional government. Don Klein is the representative of the executive. Where was the judicial department? And there is a remedy, by the way. Years ago, I'm in county and district court over a custody matter, one of those ugly divorce cases that just never seemed to go away. And the judge said, "I'm going to appoint a guardian ad litem to represent the children in this divorce case." And then he said, "By the way, I was told by the county board that I don't, that I'm to tell you that no longer is the county board going to pay for the guardian's ad litem. Now I want mommy and daddy to deposit a fund of money to pay for, to save, because the county board has asked me not to saddle the county board with those expenses." So I'm saying to you folks, talk to the judicial department. They'll listen.
Well, sir, you got, unless you're just gonna leave, which is your prerogative, you got three more questions.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you for being here. The 10, I, not necessarily a question for you, but when you made the comment about the 10%, do we keep that, or do the, does the court keep that?
You keep it.
I guess I, I wanted clarification on that. And then can you spell the author's name again? D-I-
John, D-I, capital, L-U-L-I-O, Jr. If you Google it, you'll knock your socks off.
Okay. And then I believe that even though, again, we, we sit in a precarious position where we, all this comes to us, but we don't necessarily, we're not the driver of it necessarily, but to me, yes, we can inject ourselves, and that's through the legislative process. And so, again, we could come up with being the catalyst for that discussion, to say we want to take a look at this and we want to change the legislation if we so desire. So again, we may not have control of it, but we have control of what our legislative packages, and if we want to, we can say, "Let's start that discussion with our senators and see whether or not there's the will to do, to make some changes."
That's the pathway.
And then-
You have lobbyists and the group of senators from this district. I think you have the pathway.
And so just again, I want to make sure I understood what you said. So if there's no bail system, the judge is the, the federal system where they either decide you just stay or you go? It's not, it, there's not a dollar amount, the bond, it's, is not attached to that decision. It's just you, you're there or you're not there.
I'm gonna bite my tongue.
Well, wait, wait, before you do that, during this conversation, could you talk about the third-party custodian on the federal system?
Yeah.
When is appropriate? Thank you.
Right. There is a mechanism in the federal matrix where a person who is charged to be detained, one of the options for the judge is to assign the accused defendant to a third-party custodian. Could be a minister, could be a priest, could be a rabbi, could be someone who is responsible to the judge for the good conduct and behavior of the accused.
Our retirees.
Yeah, well. I'll bite my tongue.
No, yeah, I'm done. Thank you. I, I appreciate it.
Mr. Herzog, I'm asking the board to trust me here. I'm gonna, you're welcome to come back anytime. Matter of fact, I'm looking to talk to you, but for reasons, I'm gonna cut it. Just let me say that we have brought it up. The Dr. Foxall and his staff are working on some options with the court and us to bring a pre-trial grid and have some options to get there. You're welcome to come back, but we'll, we'll end it there.
And I just, you can sit down or go back or whatever. I just want to thank you for coming. The reason I asked David to come is to create public awareness. We're all aware of this because of the letters you've sent, but I want public attention paid to this. Over the course of a year, we could be spending close to six, if it's half of it, the savings would be $16 million a year.
Wow.
That's it, that's at $93 a day for 900 people and then cutting it in half. Okay? So yeah, thank you very much, and yes, we will put on that legislative agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Herzog. Appreciate it. We'll move on to item B in presentations, resolution directing the county board to make an offer to purchase a property from Marcy Mason LLC in the amount of $900,000. Bloomingdale?
So good morning, Patrick Bloomingdale, Douglas County Administrator. So I was asked to give just a quick background of the proposed project as it relates to what's on the agenda today, which is solely the purchase of properties at the corner of 18th and Harney. So I'm going to show you the map here first. What we're talking about, and you see the map on the overhead, is on the top right, you'll see the OHA building, and in the bottom left, along with the OHA building, is the OHA parking lot. So that amount that the county board has asked to approve, the amount of $2.75 million to put that offer on the table to purchase the OHA property. The next property we're talking about would be at the bottom right, which is the Marcy Mason Building, which is the former Army Corps of Engineers Building. And the resolution before you today is to approve the ability of the county to make an offer of $900,000 for the purchase of that property. The county, just see in between, there's another building that will be involved in this proposed project, which is the Douglas County Building, Douglas County-owned building, which is currently operated by, or houses.com. On to the next page. So this process really started with the discussion of the need for juvenile court space. The sixth floor of the juvenile court, as you all know for years, has been an issue of discussion that is just not laid out appropriately, it's not big enough, and it's been exacerbated by the need for an additional judge and possibly more judges going into the future. So along with the discussion internally that the county board has had, the building commission authored a study. They hired a consultant, DLR, and the Karen Chin Group to conduct a space study for the juvenile court, but also a juvenile assessment needs study. And one of the findings that they- And one of the findings that they had, you can see here, is that the size and configuration of the floor, the sixth floor of the juvenile court, inhibits the ability to develop a secure and functional juvenile court layout based on numerous functional problems that hamper the courts from effectively and efficiently operating. That was the study that was just recently published, just this past January. Also, that study finds that juvenile courtrooms in all areas of the sixth floor of the courthouse are inadequate, they're crowded, non-trauma-informed, not, non-trauma-responsive, and do not reflect best practices for court facilities. Another aspect of this, as I just previously mentioned, was the bill that was passed in 2017 to add a sixth judge in the juvenile court. And there's a very real possibility, I think, that there may be a seventh judge coming as early as next year. To exacerbate the space problem, there was a bill which looks like it's not going to be an issue this year, but will definitely be back next year before legislature, I think, is a proposal to add a 17th district court judge. And where do you put them? The logical place would be sixth floor, by revamping, completely revamping sixth floor for district court use. Another aspect that the DLR study focused on was the current youth center at 42nd and Woolworth. And the study found that the current detention center does not reflect best practice in its modern, secure residential facility design, which means that if we would be building it today, it would look very little, or nothing like it looks now, because it was built in the mid-'90s, at a time where not as much thought was given to the fact that we have razor wire on the fences, and we have cells, we have a jail-like atmosphere for our youth. It's just not best practice. So the study finds that a modern youth detention center would have a non-institutional environment, like you currently see at the youth center, and like you see at the adult facility, access to things like natural light and fresh air and movement throughout the day, housing units that have natural light and non-cell appearance, and direct, a direct, secure connection to the juvenile court, which is what we're talking about here. A separate building for the youth center, but would have a separate, secure connection to the juvenile court. So collating, co-locating the youth center with the juvenile court, and really the entire juvenile justice center, which would house the juvenile court, and the related assistance programs and agencies, would be best practice. It would be a separate building and entrances. It would have a positive cost and impact of transportation of youth, so that would be reduced potentially significantly, because they would not have to be transported down from 42nd Street. And there would be an improved access to interrelated programs and services for youth and their families, such as the JAC and other programs that are being proposed to house in the new justice center. So, the tentative goals of what is being discussed, and nothing is in stone now, at this point, it's all tentative, but this is what's been discussed, would be a multi-story justice center on the plot where OHA currently sits, and the counties.com building currently sits. That would house eight juvenile judges and courtrooms, because there probably is going to be eight at some point in the not-too-distant future. And the juvenile court-related functions, like juvenile court administration, the clerks that are assigned to the juvenile court functions, we would propose to move juvenile probation from the keyline building, where we pay rent, co-locate them in the juvenile justice, in the justice center. But we would also put the entire entirety of the county attorney's office and public defender's office in that building. And what that, it would accomplish two things. One, the juvenile divisions of those departments would be and should be really co-located where all of those other juvenile justice functions take place. But by moving the rest of those operations, the adult functions, the public defender and county attorney, it frees up space in the courthouse, where, as we talked about the district court, there's a definite need for space immediately, really, really immediately. So it would also house shared use and meeting spaces for associated allied agencies and services. We talked about the JAC, juvenile probation, other alternatives, and a public lobby with building support, all in one multi-story building. And then it would also have, as I mentioned, a youth center facility in a adjoining, secure So, to kind of summarize, best practices would be the co-location of the juvenile court and supporting agencies, with the interrelated juvenile services, departments, and other agencies, with juvenile court in the youth center. This provides an opportunity to add and improve responsive education, recreation, and visiting programs. And really, what this does, is this is an opportunity for the county board to take a big bite out of this juvenile justice reform effort. I mean, we've been at it for so long, with varying degrees of results, but now you're taking, you know, a, a really crisis with the space needs, and you're using this as an opportunity to not only correct those space needs, but really have some positive progress towards true juvenile justice reform. So what the first step is, is where are you going to put it? Everybody knows by now that we looked at MUD, those talks were not fruitful, but I say, I call it serendipitous, because it made us look at the other spot across 18th Street. And to me, that's a much better location. Provides more room, more opportunities to do the things that you really want to do. And there's a list there of the kind of things that would, would really be a benefit as far as this, regarding this project. And then, of course, we get to what we're really here today to take action on is the OHA offer and the Marcy Mason offer. So, I will attempt to answer any questions. My hope is that some of the commissioners will help me answer those questions as well.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks, Patrick. As you know, I've been calling for a public hearing on this enormous project for a long time, so I'm delighted that today we're seeing the light of day. Thanks for bringing it out. Relative to what we're talking about, and, you know, you referenced it earlier in the Chin study, which is about the only document that's had a lot of numbers relative to this. This is a $100 million-plus operation that you are being asked to take the first step on. Let me say that again. This is a $100 million-plus operation that you're being asked to take the first step on today. That said, we have $3.65 million plus or minus as the down payment on $100 million-plus largest capital construction operation that I'm aware of the county having in some time. This is the first public hearing that we've had on this. We would probably, in the course of doing something like this, be wise to look at, what's the appropriate process for spending first $3.65 million-plus of the taxpayers' money on property that's not been publicly discussed? No public hearings, other than this one, and no committee hearings, like we had on the public safety bond a couple of years ago. As you'll recall, when we had a $45 million bond on the table, months of committee hearings with valuable input from the community, including Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom, and the Committee of Citizens for Safer Douglas County, and public entities, and private entities, and everybody who was interested, were called upon on multiple occasions over months for public input regarding the bond. It was successfully tailored and passed, and this is a $100 million compared to a $45 million taxpayer money program. And I don't think that we should rush this deal through on one presentation or public hearing. I think that this is a good start, and I agree with you that, you know, we need to take first steps. But first steps don't mean that you go from, "Here's what we're thinking about doing, and let's make an offer." So, I think that what we need to talk about today, in addition to the $3.65 million number for various properties, is the financing mechanism, not only for that initial down payment, but for the entire $100 million. Make no mistake, if you authorize $3.65 million to acquire these properties, maybe at that number, maybe at some other number, you're going to acquire these properties. Then you have them. Then you have them. And the rest of this will be the rest of the $100-plus-million-dollar project. So, I think a number of public discussions relative to that, whether we need to do it, do it here, or possibly some other location. We've already looked, not publicly, but we have looked at the MUD location, and we spent quite a bit of money studying this. Maybe you're aware of it, maybe you're not. But the county has spent nearly $100,000 studying various real estate pre-designed services for a juvenile justice facility, including 22,500 approved October 3, 2017, with HDR and MUD. We've never gotten that study. I talked to the representatives of MUD yesterday, and they never received a study. And $60,000-plus was paid for the DLR Chin study, which, as Patrick has indicated, is public, publicly available, and contains the $100-plus-million-dollar budget figure that I would strongly urge you to look at. What we want to do, I think, is, when we purchase buildings, these two buildings or any other, is determine valuation. And just, you know, in looking at this, I'm no public property or private property expert, for that matter, I own some property, but what we have here are properties that, as far as we know, their valuation is far below what we're offering. We're offering $900,000 for a building that last sold for $470,000 in 2013, is vacant, and is valued for tax purposes at $457,000. So, basically twice what it's valued for and what it recently sold for. The other building, $2.750 million for the OHA building across the street, is a little more difficult to determine, because it's been off the tax rolls, not only for OHA, but prior to that, as, I believe, the United Way not-for-profit headquarters. But, and I wish there was somebody here from the assessor's office, and this is another reason why we need to have additional hearings on this. It appears that the ground belongs to Douglas County, which would mean that the building sits on leased ground. I'm not sure. I'm going by the Douglas County assessor's information, but in looking at that, I wish somebody from the assessor's office was here to explain that. I mean, if we're talking about a building that sits on property that it doesn't own, maybe wait for that lease to go by before you offer them the better part of $2.5 million, What I would indicate is that when we purchase these two buildings listed on the agenda, it states in the documents that they are budgeted for. And I don't know where we find that in the budget. I've heard anecdotally that we're going to take money from the inheritance tax fund, which is not budgeted for anything, and apply it to the purchase price of these properties. We just had discussions for the last couple hours or more about a few hundred thousand dollars, as if it was the end of the world, and we didn't know where we were going to get it, and we're in a budget crisis, et cetera, et cetera. But now we have $3.65 million, and boom, we have budgeted money floating around that can take care of that. You know, these things deserve serious discussion by people who are serious about the spending of tax dollars. That is for the current year, budgeted for the current year. There's nothing budgeted for the out years. So, if you get these buildings, presumably, you're not going to do what they're doing now. I think that this report doesn't really go into it, but you're probably going to knock them down. And demolition means that there is something after that demolition. And what's after that demolition is the construction of the balance of that over $100 million There is, I think, allegation here that there is evidence that improving courtrooms and judges' offices leads to improving juvenile justice systems. I practiced law for a lot of years. I've talked to juvenile court judges about this specific project. They're not convinced that that's the case. They're the persons on the front line of dispensing juvenile justice. They also indicate they're in no rush to move. With the remodeling, such as it is, there is no rush to move. We have a new judge. Mr. Bloomingdale indicated that there's the possibility of future legislatures creating future judges. That's true. The hardest thing for the legislature to do, in the 30 years that I've been going down there and watching it, is creating new judges. And they just created one for us. We're not going to get another one anytime soon. And if you studied this session under this governor, he's not interested in spending any more money anywhere for anything, let alone judges in Omaha, Nebraska. So, what we have is a situation where the juvenile courts, although it's not perfect, are okay where they are. I've talked to the county attorneys and the public defenders, and they're not happy where they are. They've never been happy with where they are. I used to work in those offices, I understand why. But they work. They work. I talked to, and you all heard on record here, Mr. Alexander, the director of the youth center, talk about the youth center, which is about half as full as it was in the recent past. And it's not perfect, but it's on a huge campus that we own. And it works. And when I asked him, "Do you need to move now? Is there a need to move now programmatically, population-wise, whatever?", he said, "No, there is not." So the main stakeholders in this $100 million-plus project that's being proposed are in no hurry to move. And all I'm saying is, well, if they're not in any hurry, there is no hurry, why don't we take our time before we jump over the wall of $100 million-plus expenditures? Because that's going to involve a property tax increase. I will guarantee you, it will involve a property tax increase. Let me say it again. This will involve a property tax increase. I'm not in favor of that. If we go down the list of the properties themselves, we've got the property that we're offering $900,000 for, that in 2018 is on the tax rolls for $470,000. We've got another property that we're offering $2.75 million for. How we got to $2.75 million, I don't know. Where OHA goes from there, I don't know. OHA's not going to disappear, they're going to move somewhere. It'd be good to know where that is. It would be good to know what comparables we're using for the $2.75 million figure. The building commission just awarded a contract for a new juvenile courtroom project in the amount of $458,640. Why are we spending half a million dollars on renovation if we're not going to use it? Spending half a million dollars on a house that you're not going to live in. Well, we got a new judge that's going to use it. That's why they're spending half a million dollars on it. And once we have it built, every judge has his courtroom. Further, the county has invested $23 million in capital improvements at the courthouse between 2000 and 2015. $23 million, and, you know, we're still in the process of building that extra courtroom. The county has spent $100,000 studying various real estate pre-designed things, as I indicated. And one of the reports apparently doesn't exist. We've got the Chin report. I think I talked to Ms. Chin with Commissioner Boyle for five or 10 I think I talked to Ms. Chin with Commissioner Boyle for five or 10 minutes, and I'm listed as one of the people that they consulted. I talked to the major stakeholders in this thing, and they talked to her a little bit more. But Ms. Chin is not a person who lives or works here or has ever dispensed juvenile justice in Douglas County, as far as I'm aware. But she's an expert because she doesn't live here, and we paid her a lot of money to come here and tell us how to run our government. The makeup of the advisory group for the study did not include anyone from the youth center, the public, or public property. As a matter of fact, I don't think there's anybody from public property here today. Public property is supposed to be here when we talk about public property, but I understand they probably have other obligations. There's been no real discussion on the expenditure of $3.65 million plus $100 million. And that means that we're kind of acting like a private corporation with public money. What we might want to do is slow down, take a deep breath, listen to what Mr. Bloomingdale said. His report is a good first step. Read the Chin report. Try to find out where the other report went to, and read that. Have an in-depth discussion of where you come up with $100-plus million and why, and maybe look at all of the other properties around that could take some part or all of this project. This doesn't all have to be in one locale. In order to do that, and this, to quote Commissioner Duda, may make too much sense to actually happen. I'm moving to lay this matter over for a week for more public notice and discussion. And I make that motion.
Mr. Chair, second. Motion dies for lack of second. There's a motion by Commissioner Borgensen, a second by Commissioner Boyle. Any discussion? Christian Craft.
I would love to refute many, many, many of those points, but we bear to long. I don't talk as long as you do on issues like this. I'm not trying to run a campaign or subterfuge. This is somewhat time-sensitive.
Commissioner Craft, you might want to talk in a little more. It's not picking up, I don't think.
Census, I'm as close as I can.
I don't know if it's on.
Yes, my shoe's on.
Okay.
Because it's time-sensitive, and you have to strike when the properties are available. Now, I'm not going to go into all of the details of refuting what you said, because, as I said, we bear to long. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the item? So you know there's a motion, a second.
Mr. Chair, sorry, point of clarification. Commissioner Borgensen, that include both B and C?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have. These aren't working, is that right?
They are, but you got a point you want to make?
Yeah.
Come on, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah, I have a question. So in the documents, it indicates simply by a checkmark that this item is in the current year's budget. So I guess I'd ask our budget director, our finance director, where is it in our budget?
This is not in the budget. The source of payment has been identified as an ex... You know, we budget every year for revenues for the inheritance tax receipts. And this year's inheritance tax receipts through close to 10 months now are tracking over between $4.5 and $5 million favorable variance. And so that favorable variance has been identified as the source of funding for the purchase of these properties.
And normally, if we weren't buying real estate with inheritance tax revenues, where would that revenue go?
That inherit... That would be up to the discretion of the county board.
So we would basically be running with a $4.5 to $5 million in addition to our reserves surplus, right?
Yeah, this is in addition to reserves, yes.
Yeah, it's unencumbered. And so we're going to exhaust that basically on the purchase of this $3.65. And then, based on the $100-million-plus projection that we have in front of us, what strategic plan do we have for paying for that?
We've been working with the building commission. That would probably be funded by an issue of building commission bonds that we would put into a source of repayment over 25 to 30 years. And we've been working over those projections with the appropriate legal and financial counsel.
Okay. Does the building commission possess $100-million bonding authority?
Yes.
They currently have $100-million bonding authority?
Yes.
And so by a vote of the building commission, you're saying we're going to float $100-million worth of...
It would be a building commission bond.
Correct. But what I'm saying is, the plan for this $100-million expenditure, you're saying, is to float a $100-million-building commission bond issue?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda, you've been on the building commission a long time. Is that going to happen?
The building commission, if we function more, if we look more at how Lancaster County, Lincoln and Lancaster do their building commission, what this would require is a vote of both the county board and the city council before the building commission would have the authority to do so. And if there is an agreement that the county is willing to pay the interest as well as the principal with this, that's the only way that we can take it on. The building commission does not have financial wherewithal on their own to do it without... But every bond that we ever issue has to have, it's a considerable amendment, it has to have the blessings of both the county board and the city council before we can do anything.
Okay. And I understand this because the building commission has its own mill levy, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So under the building commission's mill levy, which is based on property taxes, could they raise their mill levy to service $100-million worth of bonds?
Only if the paying parties agree to pay principal and interest. No, the building commission does not have deep enough pockets to go spend $100 million. We have a 1.5 cent tax rate, and we're limited statutorily to a 1.7 cent tax rate. So, no, we don't have deep pockets. All we can do is represent the city and the county, and if they, if we have the full faith of the city and the county behind what we do, then we can act jointly.
So if they were to exhaust their existing bond levy for a bond issue, how many dollars would that be? How much could they do?
More in the ballpark of about $40 million, but it depends if we leave the tax rate at 1.5 cents. If we were to increase it to 1.7 cents, and we're only talking two tenths of a cent difference here, that's what it would take to get to, I believe, about $40 million worth of bonding authority on our own.
Okay, so the balance, then, would fall essentially to the county?
It's all falling to the county.
So $100-million liability to the county?
Yes.
Okay. And would the county then seek $100-million bond? I'm trying to find the finances of this.
It would be funded by a long-term lease agreement over the length of the bond, which would be 25 or 30 years. So we would enter into a lease agreement with the building commission, which would cover the bond payment.
I understand, but as we just heard, the building commission does not have statutory authority to underwrite $100-million bond issue.
Without the full faith of the county behind it. We do if the county's behind it.
Okay. And if the county is behind it, that would require a mill levy on the part of the county. Is that correct?
Tax rate, yes.
So that would be a property tax increase to the county to do this $100-million bond issue?
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe so. And incidentally, I am in no way committed to building a $100-million building. What I am committing to is buying property, period, and then we'll wait to see what we decide to do with that property.
And I appreciate that. And, you know, I am not either. I'm not even, at this point, committed to buying the property. I'm committed to discussing the purchase of the property. I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea. I don't know that this is the only use that it could be put to. I see property all around the city-county center that could be put to similar uses to this at perhaps less cost to the taxpayer. And all I'm saying is, if we laid this over, we could take some time and maybe have that public discussion, maybe have some people up here who have skin in the game relative to property tax increases, who would ask some questions about this. That's what I'm asking. What I'm hearing is, today's it. I'm disappointed that we don't have the ability to have at least a one-week discussion about $100-million property tax increase commitment in Douglas County.
Christian Moore.
Jim, what I want to say is, is this on? Can't never tell. The reason this was handled the way it was is because of the open meetings law. We are allowed to go into executive session for three reasons: personnel, real estate, and litigation. And this was the case. And when you're dealing in these matters, it's in the public interest to keep these dealings extremely confidential, because a disclosure or a leak could lead to the seller of property that we're looking at to be accelerated, because we are a deep pocket. That's how we're seen. So that's why this is, was done the way it was. And I'm going to say something that's probably going to offend a bunch of people on the building commission, but I have been trying since 1999 to get on the building commission. And I suggested a number of times that we do things to alleviate the constant remodeling and butchering of that courthouse to the east of us. One of the things I suggested was, when the parking garage was coming up, that we not build it there, that we build it at another site next west, which Jensen Tire would be excited to hear. Actually, not. And there was a donation pending, a sizable one, that would have contributed to the construction of the garage if it could have been hooked up with the Rose Theater. I brought it up, and it was rejected. So now we've landlocked ourselves with that garage, which I didn't approve, I did not want to see built there. I also suggested, when the Key Lime Building was for sale, that we move over there, and I suggested a walkway into the clerk of the district court's office. That was next. You can't do it because the building is historical. There's nothing to do with it. The front of the building is historical. Just look at the west side. You can see how it can be butchered up, too. So we have the county attorney's office that has four offices, one of which is regularly flooded. Let me repeat it. It is his building, his offices are regularly flooded. They're underwater. I watched over this period of time as the courthouse next door was butchered and remodeling. I don't know what the cost has been. I should have probably checked it out. But I would venture a guess that the building commission, I would think, has spent close to $200 million remodeling that building over the period of time since the last 45 years. I think it's been remodeled so many times, and it's under another major remodeling now, that money is being spent there constantly, constantly spent there. And we have no place to go. We have a very active and aggressive courtroom now for adults right around the corner from the juveniles, which I... It was put there before I got on the board, which I absolutely disapprove of. It's there. There's a jail up there, too, now, right down the hall from where the kids are. There's no more room. It is not, I don't think it's safe up there to have that facility there. If you go into the clerk of the district court's office up there, you have to walk sideways to get past the files. And not just because of my girth, but you have to walk sideways. So, I mean, this is long overdue, long overdue. And I really wish the MUD site had worked, because it made a lot of sense to walk right into the courthouse. This one is a very good site alternative. But we, you asked before, keep looking at sites. And I know you looked at the, wanted to look at the Farm Credit Building, or whatever that's called across the street, the AIM Building. And, you know, I mean, first of all, it's not adjacent. It's close, but it's not. I mean, you know, the thing is that this has to be done in confidence. And as a member, I offered, I said, "Why don't I get off this as a building commission member and let Jim Kavanaugh come in so you can be informed?" But we cannot get these things out. You're asking for all this public input. You can't do that when you're trying to buy buildings. It is not in the public interest to do that. And I don't know of a case where we have ever done that, or any government has ever done that. It's irresponsible. It can't be done. So, you know, we have a need. Tom Riley tells me that he walks out into the hallway, out of that place that was supposed to be a restaurant. It was the election office at one time. When you walk out of there, he says he comes out to get sunlight. It's that bad. I know they got some skylights, but it's not enough. The ceiling's low. It's a very bad situation. So this is a very good solution, and we need to quit spending money as rapidly as we can on tearing apart that building. So if there are no other speakers, I would call for the question.
So you know the speakers. There's a motion and a second to approve items B and C. Please vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no. Commissioner Morgan abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
Let me state my reason for abstaining. Some time ago, when one of my people was working with the housing authority on looking at locations, I contacted by phone the Accountability and Disclosure Commission. Mr. Daley is who I visited with. And told him, even if I did not have a conflict, I planned to abstain from that. My company or myself will not receive any compensation on this. My person is doing it at about a third of the normal fee. And I have been advised, I went down and met with the Accountability and Disclosure now, last week, to be certain. I do not have a conflict, but as I told Mr. Daley more than probably a month ago, I still plan to abstain. So I want to address that publicly, and I don't plan to vote on this matter as it continues along. I'll answer questions if anyone asks me questions about whatever, but that's my situation, and I wanted to state it clearly, and we're required to state things if we abstain. So that's why I wanted to make it very clear.
Mr. Chair. Christian Moore.
I just want to comment. Mr. Duda asked me if I wasn't voting on this. My voting machine over here is gone, so I have to tell the clerk how I vote, so he records it. I've been concerned about that, because it looks like I'm a ghost, which I'm not. But anyway, yeah, I voted yes, to make it clear. And if I may, add a personal note. I have been involved in these meetings for quite some time now, and I want to say that Commissioner Morgan's contribution to the discussion has been invaluable. His knowledge in real estate matters, and the comments that he makes are generally helpful, always helpful, to the discussion, and I want to state that. We're very fortunate to have him on the county board, but also involved in this transaction. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your nice comments. Thank you.
I know you're a Republican, but I still say that.
I may switch. No.
Okay, we literally have one minute before we kind of need to change. So if we have item G, which is human resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report, and I'm assuming that's as submitted. Item two, there's no legislative items that I'm aware of. With that, we do have reason for executive session.
Mr. Chair, I would like to add, in light of the discussion and the information we've had from Mr. Herzog, I would like to add a request on legislative matters that we ask Marcos to read the correspondence we had from Mr. Herzog and to put together possibly some draft legislation that we could then propose as suggested by Commissioner Borgensen. I'd like to see us do that.
Can I ask you this, Christian Moore?
Yes.
Director Foxhall, I've been asking them, they are supposed to be ready sometime next year to present the pre-trial matrix that I've asked them to put together. They've been meeting with the judges, they've been lining things up, and if we can include it all in there, I'd...
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, we have no legislative items. We do have need for an executive session for the purposes of litigation and real estate. With that, is there a motion, a second to go in executive session?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Moore, second by Commissioner Morgan. Morgan, please vote.
I vote yes. Commissioner Rogers and Kavanaugh. Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Everyone else voting yes.
And again, we're going to executive session for litigation in real estate. You all should put your stuff together. They're likely going to take it back. So put your, prepare your materials.